The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin around 7:00 p.m. Next, public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
We do have one hand raised, so I will call on that person now. Caller, can you please state your full name? And go ahead. Are you there? Okay, we do have one other hand raised. Caller, please state your name and go ahead.
My name, my name is Jeff Hall. And just let you know, I will be back here away darkness with the war. I want to shout out Mike Peering. Mike is a great person and I know him. And I was in the middle, so he was a dean. So I will be back soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
There are no further public comments.
Fine, now we will adjourn to closed session. All right, good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretations in Spanish are, well, interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Losha Soriano. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Yes. Si, buenas tardes. Habrá interpretación simultánea esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación simultánea, vayan por favor abajo en su pantalla, busquen el símbolo del mundo que dice "interpretación de idioma" y elija español. Está en un dispositivo móvil, como un celular o una tableta, busque tres puntitos que dice "interpretación de idioma" y seleccione español. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Reiser.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Mares.
Present.
Or un present, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Report on closed session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
I do. Item D to A Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2024 to 2025 school year. On a motion by trustee Gracia and second by trustee Reiser, the board voted 7-0 to appoint Megan De La Mater to the position of Principal at Napa Junction Elementary School. The votes were trustee Water, aye; trustee Reiser, aye; myself, aye; trustee Gracia, aye; trustee Jankowicz, aye; trustee Hart, aye; and trustee Gonzales Mares, aye.
Thank you.
President Water, Ms. De La Mater is here this evening with her family. We want to give her a warm welcome to the Napa Valley Unified School District. So, welcome and congratulations. And Ms. De La Mater, if you'd like to come up and address the board, you're welcome to do so.
I hope you don't mind. All right, good evening, School Board Trustees, Superintendent Masetti, and Napa Valley Unified Community. I am Megan De La Mater, and I am deeply honored and humbled to accept the role of Principal at Napa Junction Elementary School. Tonight, I brought with me my family, my husband, and my three children. I have them by my side to help me along this journey. I'm grateful for this incredible opportunity to lead and learn at Napa Junction and want to thank the Hiring Committee, Executive Cabinet, and the School Board Trustees for entrusting me with this very important role. I am deeply committed to upholding the mission, vision, and goals of Napa Valley Unified and commit to leading with my core values of integrity, collaboration, equity, inclusivity, and students first at the heart of every decision. I look forward to beginning the work with the dedicated staff, families, and community to ensure each of our students continue to thrive in an educational environment that promotes academic excellence, social-emotional well-being, belonging, and mastery of 21st century skills using the new tech network as our model. I am excited to embark on this journey together and look forward to collaborating with all stakeholders and everyone in our school community to elevate our students to reach their true potential and to make Napa Junction the best place to learn and work. Thank you again for this opportunity. I am truly honored to be part of the Napa Valley Unified Team and the Napa Junction family. Let's make great things happen together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have the flag salute. And would Ms. Gina De Luca lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This, this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. And next, I need approval of agenda, and I would like to move one item. I would like to move J1A, the Phillips Elementary School Student Leadership Team School Board Presentation on Facility Needs. And I'd like to move that up to, oh, right after Students of the Month recognition, F, after F3.
All right.
On all's second.
Okay, so it's moved by trustee Gracia, second by...
Other way, other one, trustee Hart first.
Okay, sorry. How novel. This is, this is truly a red letter day. Trustee, trustee, trustee Hart made the first motion, and trustee Gracia seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so it's unanimous. Thank you. And let's see, now we are, we are moving on to approval of minutes for May 23rd, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Hart. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Recognition of Visitors and Employees Organizations. We have a full house tonight. This is great.
We do, we're so grateful. I don't see online any of our leaders of NVEA, NAPS, or CSEA, or any of them in the room. There's just quite a few people here, so I just want to make sure I don't miss them. Okay, they're not here. I do know we have many staff in the administration of Phillips Elementary. Could you please rise and say hello, Phillips? So, thank you to the teachers, Principal Jones. We're very grateful for you taking the time at this point in the year to be present in tonight's board meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, and now we're moving on to my favorite part of the evening, recognition of Students of the Month. And first, we have American High, American Canyon High School for March, Morgan Crowell, and for April, Joshua Jayman and Acting Principal.
Yes, President Water. All right, so trustees, President Water, Dr. Masetti, I'm Mike Pearson. You know, when I just came, when I was asked to, to help out at American Canyon High School in April, there was a lot of like, you know, trepidation on my part. I was not exactly sure I wanted to do that. And then, one of the things happened when Patty Slate, who's the office manager at American Canyon High School, said, "Hey, we need someone to do the board student of the month." And I said, "Wait, what? I get to do that?" I'm like, "Okay, I'm in, so here we go." All right, but before I began, I want to just take a quick moment and just highlight some things here at American Canyon High School. So, just so all of you know, trustees, earlier this month, the seniors were awarded a series of dollars at their scholarship ceremony, and over $100,000 was awarded to the seniors. And these two people you'll hear about later today were recipients of that. We've had successful visual and performing arts activities and drama band, orchestra, and choir, which is actually happening tonight. Employee appreciation happened earlier in, in May, and we want to thank our leadership students and acknowledge, who acknowledged all of our American Canyon High School students, not just the teachers, but all of them. We had a very successful Spirit Week that happened in May as well, and it was enjoyed by all. And yesterday, we celebrated the retirement of two amazing clerical employees, Christina Ramirez and Deena McMahon have both are retiring from American Canyon High School. We're gearing up for graduation, which takes place on Tuesday, January, excuse me, January, June 11th. Keep saying January. And we expect to see all of you there, so better be there. And then lastly, I am thrilled that this happened because I worked really hard with this young lady to get her prepared for this. But Riley Grayden, I believe, is going to be your new Student Board Member of the Month for American Canyon High School. And I'm super proud of her, and I, I just take great joy in this. I, when I was the principal at Vintage, I really wanted the student to come from Vintage High School. And I was relatively successful at that, and so it happened here too for American Canyon. So I'm really happy that that's going to happen for American Canyon High School. Okay, but that's not why you're here. And I know Morgan back there is getting a little bit tired of waiting. So Morgan, would you please come on up here and join me? Everyone, this is Morgan Crowell. Come here, Morgan. All right, so here we go. I'm going to brag on Morgan a little bit, and then I'm going to turn it over to her. So Morgan's attended American Canyon High School all four years. Academically, she's carried a 4.4 weighted GPA from grades, through grades 10 through 12. She did not, trustee Gracia, learn her alphabet very well because she stopped at the letter A, and that's all she knew. Because that's all she earned while at, at American Canyon High School, was, was As. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause for that, yeah. During her senior year, she's been continuing that quest, taking college prep and AP courses. Morgan is a critical thinker who often is one of the, one of the first in class to participate in discussions. Her ability to use rhetoric in both discussion and writing is nearly unmatched and demonstrates her commitment to using what, what she has learned. Morgan has chosen a seat near the front of all, front all year, and watching her face when something clicks, or makes sense, or makes her think of a new idea is what teachers go into, into each lesson hoping for. And that's from one of her instructors, Mrs. Campoy. She's been involved in leadership. She's taken four Napa Valley College classes while at American Canyon High School. She's had taken three years of Mandarin, captain of the tennis team, pure court, excellent role model, captain coalition committee member, Napa Youth Council. She's going to UCLA. Do you know the eight clap yet? You will know the eight clap pretty soon, okay? It's, it's a great thing, okay? She will major in political science, and I think after you listen to her speak, you'll know why she wants to be a lawyer. So Morgan, take it away from us.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Crowell, and I would first like to thank the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this recognition. I am beyond blessed and grateful for this recognition. To my parents, thank you for your unconditional love and support and for being my best friends and teachers and your encouragement. Throughout my educational journey, I have had the pleasure of having numerous teaching styles and experiences. Starting in elementary school, I attended North Hills Christian School, which brought trials and tribulations. However, I only remember playing on the playground with my friends and teaching kids gymnastics at recess. After years, I grew bored and begged my parents to teach, to bring me to public school, taking me to Napa Junction Elementary. However, I did not get to attend the new beautiful campus. Napa Junction taught me to break out of my shell and open up. This was when all I cared about was Steph Curry and would wear basketball shoes in my Curry backpack every day. Although I do not remember my academics from elementary school, I remember the memories, the laughs, and being able to make s'mores in a box outside. On the other hand, middle school was one of the most memorable times of my life. At American Canyon Middle School, I was faced with learning and growth. Mr. Chong was the best PE teacher I had. Ms. Picard is forever in my head when I write a paper. Trust me, I will never forget to uppercase an I in my essay. I was blessed to have both of them for two years and will never forget them. You've probably heard the same story from people my age, but I'll tell the story again. The COVID-19 years changed my life for better or for worse. During my first year, I attended American Canyon High School online and was faced with new fears and anxiety that I carry with me today. To keep it simple, it was rough, yet coming back the next three years, the time was had. In my sophomore year, I had Miss Thorne for AP World History, and I knew after that class I found my passion. Although she is to blame for me no longer to wanting to go in STEM, she opened my eyes to the world of history I would not have had otherwise. While it may seem like it was simply the coursework, it was how she taught it. She always knew what she was talking about and could always answer questions thoroughly. It was clear that history is her passion. While this is undeniably the most challenging class I have ever taken, I wouldn't have had it any other way. I had fantastic teachers following my sophomore year and taking Miss Thorne's class. Last week, when I was on social media, I saw a video saying, "You'll always remember that one teacher that had the most significant impact on you." And for me, that has been Ms. Campoy. Ms. Campoy has never failed me to, failed to make me think whenever I walk into her classroom. And as a 17-year-old with senioritis, it is very difficult. Nevertheless, she succeeds every single time. She knows how to teach, whether through writing essays, specific assignments, or Socratic seminars, which are my favorite. When she told us that we wouldn't, that we shouldn't emotionally dump in our college applications, I didn't believe her, but thankfully I did. I'll be attending UCLA in the fall to major in political science. As you can probably guess from my statements, I loved history class. My favorite part of English was the Socratic seminars, which were arguing, which showed to me that I want to be a lawyer. I would not have been able to make it this far without my support system, which has always been my number one cheerleaders. And I plan to make them proud as I continue to reach my goals. Thank you again to the Napa Valley Unified School District Education and Napa Valley Education Foundation for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, next up is Josh Jayman. Josh, come on up here. Okay, academically, Josh has carried a 4.35 GPA grade for weighted grades 10 through 12. A quote from one of his, from his counselors is the following: "A person who has shown himself to be an individual of incredible character and dedication. Throughout the three years I've known Josh, I continue to be impressed by his ability to maintain a positive attitude and mindset, even during the most challenging of times, while consistently showcasing his ability to build and maintain strong relationships with many at our school. I could not be more proud of the young man that he has shown himself to be." Mr. Lanning, his counselor. He's been in Avid the past two years. He's also taken four Napa Valley College classes. He's been an excellent role model, extremely friendly and outgoing. And I can tell you, he's one of only a handful of students that has welcomed me. And I mean, not that they all haven't welcomed me, don't get me wrong, okay? But I'm kind of the weirdo guy that they see. But, but Josh, he, he'll seek me out, he'll shake my hand, he'll ask me how my day is. It's like, it warms my heart in all honesty. He's involved in baseball and football. He's, he's going to be attending Sac State, majoring in biology with the idea of being a veterinarian. Now, you just saw his smile one more time. Okay, now check that out. Does he not have a million-dollar smile? Could you not see this guy on one of those TV veterinarian shows out there, like Dr. Pohl or something like that? This is Josh Jayman. Josh, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for introducing me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Jayman from American Canyon High School. It is an incredible honor to be here tonight, and I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education and Napa Valley Education Foundation for this remarkable recognition. I'm deeply grateful and appreciative of this honor, and I also want to thank my wonderful parents and family for the overwhelming support and inspiration which have motivated me to push myself every day. Additionally, I am profoundly thankful for my teachers and counselor who have provided priceless support and guidance throughout my academic journey. Allow me to share a bit about my academic experience so far. After moving from Michigan to California, I, I attended Canyon Oaks Elementary School from third through fifth grade, followed by American Canyon Middle School, and I am currently in the last few days of my last year at American Canyon High School. My parents enrolling me in the school district was a pivotal decision that has significantly changed my path. The strong educational support and foundation that NVUSD has provided have prepared me for my future endeavors in academics, work, and even social life, as Mr. Pearson said. But through my journey, instructors and mentors have been instrumental in my life and success as a student, and my most impactful teachers for me have been Ms. O'Brien, and she's here today. And my most impactful teacher for me has been Ms. O'Brien, like I said. And during my sophomore year, as we transitioned back to in-person learning, it was difficult, and I faced challenges with my first year of chemistry. Despite barely securing an A by the end of the first semester with my previous teacher, I realized I needed a different teaching approach, and I was fortunate to be transferred to Ms. O'Brien's chemistry class. She warmly welcomed me and provided the support I needed to excel. Her dedication and encouragement were so effective that I was even actually able to later tutor one of her students the following year after completing this class. Ms. O'Brien not only guided me academically, but also encouraged me to join Avid and helped me grow as a person. She goes above and beyond for her students, fostering a family environment in Avid that has been incredibly nurturing. Counselors have been, have held a pivotal role in my college application process and my dual enrollment at Napa Valley College Washington High School. Building connections with my counselors have been immensely beneficial to me as they have given me crucial guidance throughout my college application process, helping me with transcripts, submissions for college, and additional courses at community college. Although Mr. Saum was a junior year counselor and not my direct advisor, he also offered valuable advice on class planning and life outside of school. Both Mr. Saum and Mr. Lanning have significantly enriched my high school experience with their support, friendliness, and wisdom. These past few years have been profoundly influenced my life. Without these exceptional mentors, I would be far behind in my decision-making process regarding my future. Despite being accepted into the UC schools I applied to, I've chosen to attend Sacramento State University for Biology as my major. And while there, I plan to engage in extensive research and volunteering as my ultimate goal is to apply to graduate school for a veterinary program. Ever since I was four, my dream was always to become a veterinarian, and my passion for animals has only grown, especially after getting my own black lab on my birthday. The most significant lessons I have learned from Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Lanning, and Mr. Saum are to be self-driven, ambitious, and determined. These qualities will continue to guide me in my future endeavors. Once again, thank you so much for this honor. I truly appreciate this opportunity as it further instills motivation in me to strive for success and personal growth in the years to come. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Well, that's great. Good luck to both of you. And now, Valley Oak High School. Will Principal Cisneros present the Student of the Month for Valley Oak High School? And Joanne Clark will present the student for Valley Oak High School at ACHS via Zoom.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having us. Great to see you all. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, Board of Trustees. It's wonderful to be here just a little bit here for Valley Oak. We are gearing up for graduations. Rehearsals start tomorrow, graduation on Monday, so we're looking forward to seeing everyone joining us. We're happy to report, we had a scholarship assembly, and we were able to either award locally or scholarships that came in through the community, about $60,650 to graduate in senior class. So, super excited that our kids are being honored and moving on to college. And then also too, we hosted our first Trades Career Fair where we highlighted maintenance and operations. So, thanks to Mike's team that came and joined us and allowed our students to see what's really happening in the trades and how they can get engaged. And a good number of students are now thinking about and are working towards enrolling in the welding program at Napa Valley College. And so, we've done some great things here at, at Valley Oak and continue to, to showcase our students in our community in ways in which our kids can further their education and also their training. But tonight, we have Brandon Campos with us. He is just, I'm so incredibly proud of this young man. He's our Student of the Month. He's very quiet. He always went kind of about his business. And I think part of it is just being shy and trying to figure out what is really, really Valley Oak has to offer me as a student. And little by little, he started opening up and being able to take risks and ask questions in the classrooms. His teachers talk about his kindness, his respectfulness, his willingness to be the one student to ask some questions when he was really stuck, and that he was really appreciated to, to, to have in class because he elevated the conversations that they were having. Around campus, he is a young man that although he's a bit shy, he would say hello and, and engage in conversations. And I really has, I, what I call it, a heart of gold. And so, I'm extremely proud to have him represent the month of March because it's also my birthday month. And so, with that, do you like introduce it to Brandon? If you can unmute, if you want to share a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cisneros, for introducing me. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Campos. I would like to start off by thanking the Board of Trustees and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this opportunity and the recognition. I would like to start off by saying my experience with the NVUSD. It's been an interesting one, to say the least. My first school was Napa High. I eventually got transferred to Valley Oak. Suddenly, I was hit with having to be a cousin to this new school with new people. Although it wasn't as bad as I thought, it still left me with the strange reality that this would be my school from now on and the school that I would be graduating from. The reason I was sent was a very simple one. It was due to credit deficiency in the beginning of my freshman year due to COVID and sophomore year due to the lack of help I was receiving, which led me to overall giving up as a whole on asking questions. The only teachers I really could give recognition to at Napa Valley that really helped me a lot were Mr. Gregory, Mr. Haddon, Mr. Gassner, Coach Ebsen, and especially my two English teachers, Ms. Aguiar and Mrs. Valisopolis, for helping me when I needed it the most and never giving up on me. I also must mention another person who has always supported me, that would be my mother. Without her, I wouldn't be in this position to keep working hard and change my thoughts on going to college. Everything I do is for her and my family, and I'm glad I have someone there for me through everything. My plans after high school are planned, as I would like to attend the JC, mainly taking the welding program they have to offer, taking culinary class as well. My main plan is to switch to the trades, but after I can't settle for one plan if it doesn't work out, therefore, I ended up choosing culinary because cooking is something I do often and enjoy. Overall, it wouldn't be a bad choice to involve myself with that type of career and education. I must say, Valley Oak has changed me in more ways than one, and I am very grateful because all of those ways have been for the better. I've become more positive showing up to school and being involved with the work itself. There's not one teacher from Valley Oak that hasn't helped me and hasn't made a positive. and hasn't made a positive impact in my path of education. And with that being said, I would like to thank everybody for listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Ms. Clark.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'd like to introduce Jessica Kubakub. She is an amazing young woman who entered our class this year. She is a very determined person. She set a goal for herself to graduate a year early. So she is a junior and will be graduating on Monday with us. And she's also going to be a speaker at our graduation ceremony. So she is someone who has a lot to say. And she's been a Level Four on our pyramid of success. She's also maintained 4.0 GPA, 100% attendance. She is on our class leadership team and is instrumental in assisting me with our Fun Friday activities and is always giving input on how I can improve our class and the student experience in our class. So Jessica, thank you for being here. If you'd like to share a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica, and I'm honored to have been chosen for Student of the Month by the school board. I want to thank the Board of Trustees and the Napa Valley Foundation for choosing me. My time at Valley Oak has been incredible. But before my time at Valley Oak, I used to be a student at ACHS. During those years, I had some personal issues to deal with. I was a junior when I got transferred to Valley Oak, but I pushed myself with pride and gratitude. Of course, with the help of Ms. Clark, to become an early graduate, and I couldn't be more proud of myself. Once I got placed into Valley Oak, I realized I had so much potential, which leads me to where I am now. Valley Oak has allowed me to accept and believe that anything is possible. I want to thank my parents for believing in me and Ms. Clark for pushing me past my limits to get where I am today. I also want to thank Ms. Clark for making sure I had all the help I needed, motivation, and I also want to thank her for changing my life. I definitely had some waves to overcome, but at the end of the day, I knew I'd get better. After high school, I plan to be a part of the medical field and attend NBC or a trade school to study in nursing. Once again, it is an honor to have me here. Thank you.
Great job, Sophia.
And now, will Napa Independent Studies, for Napa Independent Studies, will Principal Cisneros please present the Students of the Month?
Yes, I'm glad to be here again to present our Students of the Month. NVIS is the first one that is going to be practicing tomorrow, rehearsing for graduation, and then on to the grand stage on Monday. For them also, scholarships, we were fortunate to again have the support of our community with our program and were able to, actually, one of our students, just like in the Valley Oak program, we had one student that received a $20,000 scholarship. So from one of our local donors, they were selected. And so we were able to in total give out $30,400 to the graduating class. So it's really exciting again for the support from the community. My first Student of the Month is Sophia Gonzalez. Unfortunately, she's an early graduate, and unfortunately, she was not able to be here today. But I do want to say a few words on behalf of her teacher. Sophia is quite the achiever. She's the sweetest, most self-spoken, well-mannered student that she's ever had as a teacher. She's always smiling, always appreciative of the people around her who are willing to help and be able to be part of the journey. She's well-liked by the teachers and office staff and respected by her peers. Her personality exudes optimism and goodwill. Sophia will be, you know, graduated already and will be, you know, proud to cheer on everyone around her. She has a calm demeanor and authenticity will no doubt make an impact on her future endeavors. She will be an impactful leader because she is selective about what she wants to say and when her opinion is a shared people value or respect for. So we are very happy to have her represent the month of March. And I, so again, my apologies, she was not able to be with us tonight.
In fact, we have a big surprise for you. She is indeed in the audience right now.
Oh, she is, all right.
Yes.
Hi, the teacher.
So why don't you, why don't you step on up and to the microphone?
I'm excited.
Cool.
Good afternoon. My name is Sophia Gonzalez. I would first like to start off by saying thank you to NVUSD for selecting me as a Student of the Month. I would also like to thank my teacher, Mrs. Farrell, for providing the support I needed during my time at NVIS. Before enrolling in NVIS as a sophomore, I struggled with the curriculum in my previous high school, Napa High, offered. I wasn't able to focus on my studies, especially in large group settings. This led me to fail my classes for my sophomore year. When I discovered NVIS towards the end of my sophomore year, I researched and was instantly drawn to what they could provide for me. With the support of my mother and father, Marisol Diaz and Ignacio Gonzalez, I was able to enroll. And since being enrolled in, for the last two years, I've received an increase in my grades as well as being able to manage my time more efficiently. NVIS was the best decision I've made to become an even better scholar. After high school, I plan to attend Napa Valley College to begin my path to becoming a speech-language pathologist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. I'm very happy that you were there. I'm sorry I was not there to join you. All right. Our next student is Camila Shitius with us online.
Okay, we're going to take some photographs here. Well, congratulations. Sheena, that's never happened before. Okay, Mrs. Cisneros.
All right. So our next student is Camila Moreno. I'm just incredibly proud of this young lady. She started with us at Valley Oak, did everything that she could hear. It had some challenges, but then transferred over to Independent Studies and just had this spirit about her, this tenacity, this strength that said, I am going to graduate this year no matter what. And so as she worked with Mrs. Garenzer, she set the goals really high for herself. She was to finish on time despite having a tremendous amount of work that she needed to do. And today, when I opened up the grade book, I saw that she had completed every single unit that she needed to be able to graduate with us on Monday. She is not only intelligent, hardworking, and motivated. We are proud of her accomplishments. She set her mind to achieve and to challenge herself, and she did it. She connected well with her peers, with the teachers. She was eager to explore and learn about everything that she was engaged with and is now looking forward to her next step. So Camila, I am extremely proud. I know the road and the challenges that you faced, and I just can't say enough about how the work that you did. So if you can unmute and share a little bit with us. Is your mic working, Camila? We might be having some connection problems, it sounds like.
All right. I think we're going to have to move on. We can read her speech at our next meeting.
Thank you. I would let her know that.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you. All right, before we move on, we're going to have to backtrack because I made a mistake. We're going to have to redo the acceptance of the minutes, of the minutes. Right, because I zipped through and did not ask for any abstentions. So let's see. Okay, so we're going to go back to E5 for approval of the minutes. May 23rd, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Student trustee McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, so 6-4 and plus student trustee and one abstention, it passes. Thank you. And now, we can move on to our students from, we've moved you up, our students from Phillips Elementary School. Yay.
Want to read the title of your?
Yep, yep. It is Phillips Elementary School Student Leadership Team, School Board Presentation on Facilities Needs. And my goodness. We're ready.
The PMES News, I'm Victoria.
And I am Reese. We want to welcome our special guests to the PMES studios.
Each week, we report on the important stories impacting Phillips Magnet Elementary.
The leaders of PMES rely on us to get information about all the things impacting the Phillips community.
That's right, but today we are speaking to a very special audience.
We want to say thank you to the Napa Valley Unified School District Board for listening to our presentation today.
Now, we will pass over the presentation to the team from the Phillips Leadership Academy.
But before we do, remember.
Keep learning and keep leading.
Like this? Thank you so much for listening to our presentation today.
We are fourth and fifth grade students from Phillips Magnet Elementary, are participants of a young leadership academy, a program of On The Move.
We meet twice a week at their school to work, to solve problems, and find ways to improve and encourage our community.
One way we do this is through our weekly news broadcast.
We also look for solutions to problems that we see in our campus, in our community.
In the past, we have worked to make sure our campus is trash-free, create a buddy bench so students have someone to be at recess, and even meet with the mayor of Napa to make sure that Phillips parking lots have good lighting.
Each year, we ask ourselves, what does Phillips need?
And this year, we talked to other students. We recognized that something needed to be done at our campus.
First of all, we want to start by saying that we are grateful for all the ways that the school board has supported our school.
We have great teachers and get on work on amazing projects.
However, our campus, like many campuses in NVSD, could use some work.
When we asked our classmates and friends about something they want to change to Phillips, everyone agreed that making our campus safe and better was at the top of our list. In fact, as you can see by this chart, Phillips is one of many schools that benefit from summer repairs.
We started the school year with this broken playground. It actually has been broken the year before, so we haven't played on it since we were in the third grade.
A few weeks ago, this was finally fixed, and we're grateful that we have another piece of equipment.
We aren't the only school in Napa where students and staff have to wait a long time for repairs. And we are grateful that our playground is finally repaired. But we think that kids in Napa deserve better. Every day, we come to school to learn from our amazing teachers, and one thing we have learned is the power of our voices.
And today, we wanted to use our voices that even as we're learning, we, like so many students in the NVUSD community, we are learning of schools and classrooms that need repair.
In talking about, in talking about improving our campus, our coaches explained to us how funding for schools work.
We never heard about district lines and property taxes before.
One thing that really made us sad was to see the difference between the other schools. We have schools that look like this. They have beautiful buildings and play structures.
And other schools that look like this. Broken equipment and roof that leaks or classroom that doesn't have a working AC system saw students and teachers try to learn their A.D. degrees.
And it really seems unfair that now that some kids not only have great teachers, but also have nice buildings, playgrounds, as safe places to be.
We know that Napa is a great place that has great schools, but someone coming on our campus might not be able to look past the holes, chip paint, and broken equipment.
We believe that, we believe that every school in Napa should be great.
There are people who only focus on their kids, their neighbors, and their own families. But at Phillips, we are taught that part of being a leader is thinking about the whole community.
We want to live in a place where we think of every single child in Napa as ours. And so we want the best for them, the best teachers, the best playgrounds, and the best education.
Many times when adults move to a new community, they ask, where are all the good schools?
We want to live in a community where we can say all of them. Every single school in Napa is great because we care about every single child in Napa.
That is why we are asking the board to approve a potential resolution for a Napa school bond in 2024. We hope the community will approve a future bond measure, and we promise to work hard to make sure that our parents and families know how important it is for it to pass.
We promise to do our part to make every school great in Napa. And we hope they do the same. Thank you.
You got to stay up here, though. You got to come back. They may have questions. Well, Principal, Principal Jones, you must be very proud of your students. And I'd like to ask Mr. Michaels if we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And what about my trustees here? Thank you, trustee Chankowitz, and then Hart.
Thank you so much. Victoria, AJ, Yvette, Juliana, Leslie, Diego, am I saying this right? Dulce, Reese, Iris, Gladys, and Juan. And, and Lizette. Thank you. I appreciate your bravery to come here this evening. And Liza. Thank you. I appreciate your bravery to come here this evening. I appreciate you advocating for your school, your fellow students, your teachers, your learning environment, and yourselves. I loved how important your education is to you. Here is what you made very clear to everyone in the room. Every school is a good school, and every child deserves a safe and modern learning environment. It is true, and yes, it is a priority. I'm very impressed by your leadership skills, your student voice, and your advocacy for the issues that are important to you. You guys made me cry. And now, as student leaders, you have made passing the bond a priority for your community. I can't wait for you to come back and tell me about all the people you shared your message with and how you did it. I want you to come back and tell me. I'm very proud of you and of all of Phillips Elementary. Thank you very, very much.
Trustee Hart.
I would just like to say that you know that you won when you have like half of the board up here in tears because you guys did such a great job. I've been honored to actually come out to your school a couple of times in the past month or two, and I have been nothing but impressed with the entire school, with the students, with the administration, the teachers. Everybody has been really, really great, and unfortunately, you know, we don't get that message enough, you know? So, thank you so much for everything that you do. You guys did a great job here tonight. We all are behind you 100%. We need that bond to pass as well. We want to give you the best learning environment possible. So, thank you so much for being out here tonight to help us out.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the suggestion perhaps to our communications department that that might be a really nice video that we might want to share to advocate for future school improvements. I think they said it very nicely, so hard to beat that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and trustee Weiser?
Briefly, I just want to echo the comments of my fellow trustees and express my gratitude and my pride to hear you come up and express your investment in yourselves and in your community. I 100% agree that every school in Napa should be the best school, that every student deserves a safe and modern learning environment. And overall, the most important thing, I want to thank your teachers and the community at Phillips for teaching students to understand the power of their voice, and I want to say lastly that we understand and feel the power of your voices as well. Thank you so much. We're so proud.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Mars?
I am just, the tears, of course, but I think what most importantly matters is just how you made this room feel. And I think, I know that it goes beyond this space and this room. Each one of you taking your time as students to look into your own school, but I think the part that I'm most touched by is that you're looking at all of the students in our school district. And I think that's a very powerful message, that all of us have a responsibility to think of, yes, what's happening with me and my surrounding, but what's happening everywhere else. So, thank you for your voice, because when you come up here, we want to hear from you, but also, how does that feel about hearing from everybody else too, and so you represent that. And I just really appreciate the graphs. I really appreciate all the probably homework you had to do. I agree, property taxes and how that all works is new to many of us. And so, I knew, I know it takes a lot of effort to be here today, and I know you must have felt nervous, but just know there is a community behind you. And of course, it starts with where you're at with your school. So, I do congratulate everyone at Phillips Elementary and the partners with On the Move to bring you here today and support you in raising that voice and coming to the space. And I also propose an idea of a podium that is more conducive to our young students and not just the adults in the room, so that you know that this space is yours. Thank you.
Trustee Chu.
So, we love, love, love to always hear about our students. And I, for one, one of seven, have been convinced of my vote based on your presentation. And I can guarantee that I am all for you guys as the students, and I will do my part in helping that reality. So, thank you very, very much.
Well, I'll weigh in, and I too have visited Phillips a few times recently. In fact, I'll be visiting your school tomorrow, and I am so proud of you because instead of concentrating on the "me," you're talking about the "we." You're thinking of how everyone, we're all affected in this community by schools that are run down. It's a shame. It's a shame, and I'm so proud of you for coming down and being brave, and you spoke from the heart. That's a great quality. Don't lose it. If you speak from the heart, you can convince all kinds of people. Just keep it up. Don't stop. Superintendent?
Thank you so much, President Water. I would love it if the staff that's here from Phillips, if you could just take a moment and come to the microphone. Students, you did a great job. We dressed, they put so much time into this. I was at their campus. We did a dress rehearsal on Friday. They were so prepared to come here, so professional, just incredibly prepared, such an investment of time, the research to leading to the presentation. And I'm just so grateful for the educators in the room that led them to be able to create this opportunity for them. One of the highlights of our new strategic plan that we are adopting that we'll bring before the board on the 20th is to find ways of incorporating student voice in the work that we do. And so, I just really want to thank the educators. It's, Mr. Ringwall and I went and met with the faculty there and Principal Jones, and it was the staff that thought, well, you know what, we can do something about this, and we can make sure that our students have a voice in solving this complex challenge that we have around facilities needs across the district. So, I just really want them to come to the microphone, say their name, their role, because they deserve a lot of credit, right? Students, didn't your teachers do a great job of preparing you? So, come on up, Ms. Ellison. Introduce yourself and what you do at Phillips.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Ellison, and I teach 5th grade, and I'm also fortunate to be a coach for Leadership Academies and On the Move for the last, I think, six years.
And my name is Paige Simmons. I'm a 3rd grade teacher at Phillips, and I am a recent addition to the Leadership Academy, but I've loved every minute, and I'm so inspired by the work that they do every day.
So, thank you, Ms. Ellison and Ms. Simmons, and then I know we have Phillips' parents in the rooms. Can you please stand up? Thanks for bringing them down here. Gracias. Thank you for creating this leadership opportunity for your students. Gracias por crear esta oportunidad para que ellos puedan demostrar su liderazgo que tienen aquí en la comunidad. Muchísimas gracias, okay? All right. Oh, of course, Ms. Ellison, the mic is yours.
Anyway, so this project actually was birthed out of our students wanting their own playground to be improved, and then we looked at other playgrounds around the community, and they sort of came to the realization that a lot of schools need a lot of work, and so it really dovetailed with this upcoming bond measure. But it's their voices that inspired it, the project in the first place. But I also just wanted to say thank you to all the parents who took their kids here. It's getting close to some people's bedtimes, mine, but... And I just wanted to take one minute to say that none of you have to do homework tonight. You're good.
That's wonderful. Thank you again for coming. This is just great.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any? Do we have anyone online wanting to comment?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised. Justin Hall, please, go ahead.
There we go. I think I'm gonna just wait, and when you guys finish the war, I will make a very great comment on mic here. I will be right back. I'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you. We can wait until then, and do, did you get any public comments for non-agenda items?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email to publiccomments@meusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. And now, we can, whoops, now we can move on to reports. Board of Education and Student Board Representative?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all one last time. To start off my report, I want to report on New Tech High School. Last month, they had a scholarship ceremony and a whole school award ceremony. Yesterday, they had their version of Finals for Seniors, which is a presentation called Defensive Learning, and they all received their caps and gowns. Afterward, they did a check-in with all the seniors that was mandatory, and they received their yearbooks and graduation/senior trip updates. They also had a field day and a cultural food festival. Today is their graduation practice and also the senior sunset. Monday is their senior brunch, where students receive their cords, and then after that is graduation. Finally, Tuesday, they leave for a field trip and come back Wednesday just in time for grad night. They ordered senior sweatshirts and have had many fundraisers for these festivities, all of which could not have been possible without the volunteers that have helped out with these fundraisers. Next week, they also have the rest of their underclassmen finals and the No Talent Talent Show. At American Canyon High School, they have been celebrating Pride Month this week with giveaways and more. Clubs all around campus have been working to nominate and elect new officers for the next year. Two days ago, the Black Student Union and Embracing Black Culture Officers put together a black graduation ceremony. They invited families, staff, and community members. Dr. Jennings was in attendance as well. They had one of their football coaches give a beautiful commencement speech and allow students to share a little bit about their high school experience. All students had their slideshows presenting their achievements and future plans. All the students also received cords and certificates. At Vintage High School, right now, they are just wrapping up the year and did their last crusher-of-the-month luncheon to celebrate their students. They just did big-game mini-golf against Napa High, and unfortunately, they did win, and they are doing grad prep right now. Senior Sunset is on Friday this week, and now everyone is just planning for next year's activities. And finally, from Napa High, we are also getting ready for the end of the year. Last year, we had our final rally of the year, and all finals for our seniors will be done by the end of the day tomorrow. Monday, we have our senior breakfast in Colorone to celebrate the end of the year, and our counselors are going into senior classes to make sure students are prepared for graduation and beyond, helping with stuff like final transfer requests and getting enrolled in Napa Valley College. This Tuesday, I am graduating Napa High School alongside all of my Napa High classmates and friends, and I couldn't be more excited and scared at the same time. And I'm also excited to announce that I will be giving a speech at the ceremony. And finally, as I conclude my last board report, I want to give a few words of gratitude. First, I want to thank Gianna and Lourdes, who are the student body presidents of Vintage and New Tech, for constantly updating me on their schools. Next, I want to thank Mestura, the student board member alternate, not just for keeping me updated on ACHS, but for also being an incredibly organized and driven person, and truly helping the students of our district with your willingness to advocate and work towards progress. Lastly, I'll save some of this for a little later, but I want to thank the board, Dr. Masetti, and the executive cabinet for making me feel welcomed here in this room. I'd be lying if I said that I wasn't scared to death the first time that I sat down in this chair last August. But because of the kindness and openness of everyone in this room, every time I came back for a meeting, I felt more and more comfortable, a little more excited and more willing to speak my mind. I've also come to appreciate that these board meetings don't feel overly formal or strict. And although that may be because, for President Water, there's never a bad time to crack a joke, I also think that this is because you all truly care about the work you do here, and that is nothing short of inspiring. And with that, I conclude my final report.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, we said to hold our comments about, okay, so we can't. I'm just, yeah, not gonna miss going after you after the board report here, but, yeah, just a very boring report of our duties, my duties. This week was mainly the more busier week, I think, just in general, this June, with the governor's budget and all that is making lots of parts of my world difficult. But really enjoyed earlier this week being at the diversity, equity, and inclusion, and now adding belonging to that work, which is so important as I'm part of the steering committee, and just looking forward to having this last, looked forward to having that last session, but more so, just providing a bit of input as to what the steering committee, along with the folks in the room, as to what that role could be like for the next coming year. So, just sort of that ending of the school year where you start thinking more now of not just your last days of this school year, but just what's gonna happen next. And then, just, I think that was this morning, we were with the city of Napa, which that is in our agenda in the minutes reflected, I think, for next time. And, yeah, I think for me right now, it's just looking forward to next week, to the graduations. It always becomes a moment to reflect on what this last year brought to all of us. And then I know later today, we're going to be celebrating some really important folks that have contributed to our school district. And I always love ending our school year in June because it's Pride Month, and we get to be extra colorful this month and just proud of who we are as human beings in the district. So, that concludes my report.
All right, I'd like to start off by again saying Happy Pride Month to everybody here in the room. I'd like to share a few thoughts about pride. It's something that's very near and dear to my heart, so I would like to pull some stuff and explain why that's the case. By supporting LGBTQ+ people in the school community, we can help to encourage acceptance, raise awareness, and improve mental well-being. Educational establishments always aim to create a safe and supportive environment, and by openly accepting and acknowledging those who are looking to celebrate Pride Month, it will send a powerful message of inclusivity and belonging across our schools. There are many misconceptions and prejudices which continue to create barriers to integration, but now is the time to challenge these and create a more inclusive and accepting community where every student is free to be themselves. No one should ever feel alone, and every individual person within a school environment should feel valued and respected. Moving back into the regularly scheduled report, May 29th. I had the opportunity to visit Phillips Elementary School along with trustee Water, and we attended their shout-out session, which I'm not sure if that's something that other elementary schools do or not, but it was very informational to us. They talked about attendance. They split it up into maybe five or six different topics about their school, and it was basically a, you know, a roll-up of what had happened during the previous trimester, and it was really, really cool. I thought it had a lot of great information. They talked about their test scores, and it was, again, something I didn't realize that they did, and it was really cool. So, thank you for inviting us to that. I attended the Pueblo Vista Open House. A couple of days later, I actually got to go to American Canyon for the first time and see some of those really awesome schools down there. That Napa Junction School makes me super jealous. I'll have to definitely say that. It's a beautiful site. I got to visit there with Principal Norine Montgomery, who we're fortunate enough to have her coming to cheer here at Napa next year, so excited for that as well. And then after Napa Junction, I went over to Amcan Middle School with Dr. Patelor and got to see that site, which also, super amazing robotics class. They have like 1,000 kids, over 1,000 kids on that campus, and just great. And I will say, of all the sites that I've visited, the Amcan were the most prepared for me, and so they've set the bar for all the other school visits going forward. Later that afternoon, I was over at Vintage High School for the recognition ceremony for their seniors. They had, of note, 134 kids attain the seal of by literacy this year, including my son, so I'm super happy and proud of him. June 1st, we all got to go to Mike Pearson's retirement party, which was amazing, and like a who's who of NVUSD for the past 30 years, so pretty awesome event to be a part of. The next day, Senator Dodd had a brunch for some local The next day, Senator Dodd had a brunch for some local elected officials, and that was also a nice opportunity to kind of mix and mingle with folks. Finance Committee meeting on June 5th, along with a special board meeting for Superintendent Performance Review. This morning, I got to go back to Pueblo Vista for the spring music concert and see the results of the 4th grade strings band and choir. So that was really fun. And then also the City of Napa joint meeting. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Chu and I conducted the student board member interviews for next year. Each candidate was excellent, and it was difficult to choose, given the caliber of our applicants. But once again, I know we're going to have an excellent student board rep, but make no mistake, Finn and Mistura are tough acts to follow. I attended the Vichy Open House, where I got to peruse a book fair, hang out in the quad like I did 24 years ago, when my daughter attended kindergarten there, and peek into classrooms. Parents and teachers were genuinely engaged, and I have to admit, it made me miss my kids a little bit. I attended a portion of the VHS Spring Choir. We have exceptionally talented kids in NVUSD. I also had the pleasure of attending Mike Pearson's retirement event. Comments to follow a bit later. But suffice it to say, it was a wonderful, heartwarming event with a first-class performance from President Water. We all attended Senator Bill Dodd's brunch for elected officials, and Cecilia, Mike Thompson, Jackie Spears, Chris Calderon all paid tribute to the work, commitment, and legacy of Senator Dodd he's terming out. Mary and Bill generously opened their home to celebrate, as Trustee Hart said, elected officials in Area 3, and it was an extension of how Senator Dodd has conducted his career. There was a very competitive basketball game at Silverado Middle School between teachers and students, and students barely squeaked by with the win. I had an opportunity to have coffee with Joe Schunk and discuss all things education. I always learn something. I too attended the Board Advisory Finance Committee meeting. Comments to follow. The NVUSD Superintendent Performance Evaluation Meeting last night, and again, the City of Napa and joint meeting at Napa City Hall. I would encourage all of you to review the notes on the next agenda packet. It was a great meeting. And that concludes my report.
Okay, on 31st, I attended the Napa High School Spring Concert at the District Auditorium and witnessed what felt like the end of an era as we transitioned from one choir director to another. And then on the 1st, I attended Mike Pearson's retirement party. On the 2nd, the gathering at State Senator Bill Dodd's house of local elected officials. On the 4th, I met with Assistant Superintendent Manguala to discuss the upcoming budget adoption. And then on the 5th, I attended the Superintendent Evaluation. And that concludes my report.
So on May 27th, I actually watched the live stream of American Canyon's Memorial Day Ceremony put on by American Canyon Troops Support, who is led by, that's led by Cindy Beederman, who's also our Napa County Board of Education trustee. And she invited ACHS Public Display of Acapella to sing the National Anthem and Canyon Oaks students to give a pledge of allegiance. So really grateful for those venues for, to showcase our kids. It was a great ceremony, very, very touching, and really appreciated all the work that Ms. Beederman does to put this on every year and invites our students every year. On May 29th, as Trustee Jenkwood said, I interviewed student board members for the next school year. I also attended the retirement party for Mr. Pearson and a brunch for elected officials at Senator, the State Senator Bill Dodd's house. And on the 3rd of this, this month, I am, well, I am part of the Career and College Readiness Leadership Team. So we had a meeting this Monday. And the following day, I actually got to see a little bit of what is in existence in our school district. So I think Trustee Hart mentioned she visited the robotics class at ACMS run by Tammy Lee. And she is very resourceful, really, really understands the way that career and college readiness really align. And being at the middle school, she also knows she is somewhat of a conduit to help that vertical alignment between elementary and high school and beyond. And so she was approached by Chrysler and Associates to give a tour of the American Canyon facility, which she took several, many of her students in the fall. And she had an opportunity to do some collaborative work, got some pieces of wood, and had her students make things, and created this competition called Something from Nothing. And Mr. Chrysler and NCOE Superintendent Barb Nemko came to judge some of the work and selected four teams to come and present their work at the Napa County Board of Education this past Tuesday. And there were four teams with 16 students. One of the students was mine. And they did a fabulous job in presenting their work. And I just thought it was a great, you know, just a great representation of our schools, especially of American Canyon, and also about a lot of our amazing teachers. I know Tammy is awesome. I've worked with her many, many years as a parent. And it's just amazing what we can do in our school district. And I think the way that our Career and College Readiness Leadership Team is approaching some of the work is going to kind of look very, very similar to how we want this opportunity for all of our students. So I'm very grateful to have both of those experiences this week. And I'll just end by saying I have two shout-outs, both from American Canyon today. I was kind of a messenger. And the first one is a student of ours at, let me pull up her, his. So one of our American Canyon Middle School students, I think last year, he created some bookmarks for us. This year, he created another set of bookmarks for us. This is a leather bookmark that he has, I don't know, I don't know anything about the technology that he used, but he printed our name embossed, or I don't know what it is, put our names on there. And the message on the bottom is called Guiding Our Future. And he asked me to read this little blurb. Hello, my name is Noel Soto Gonzalez. I am in 8th grade, and I attend American Canyon Middle School. I want to take my time to thank you all for your continued support, dedication, and commitment. You have all gone above and beyond to outperform, exceed, and improve our schools. You have been here to see all students succeed and thrive. We all truly appreciate you all. I hope you all enjoy the bookmarks while reading a good book this summer. Thank you and have a good evening, Noel Soto Gonzalez. And I think Trustee Water would really appreciate this being.
Yes.
Yes. And my second shout-out is actually from a parent down in American Canyon. She has a student at Canyon Oaks and one at ACMS, and she's also on the Board of Canyon Oaks PTO. And she bakes on the side, not that, you know, she's not busy enough, but she made these macarons with the district's logo on here for us, and that's for the staff also on the side here. So very grateful for the treat for both of my constituents from American Canyon. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Let's see, on May 28th, I had the pleasure of visiting both Donaldson Way and Napa Junction Elementary Schools with Director Matt Manning and a Tosa Tracy Weiss. I had asked to see some of the letters training that we have been, you know, integrating and adopting in our elementary classrooms in action. And Director Manning did a really nice job of putting together an array of grades span on both sites. Sorry, I left my paper at home that had all the teachers listed, but I really appreciated being welcomed into the classrooms, seeing what happens where the rubber hits the road. So many thanks to Donaldson Way Elementary School teachers and Napa Junction Elementary School teachers, and Principal Norine Montgomery, who was also able to join us for a good conversation about literacy and education. The 31st, I too attended the Napa High Choir Concert. It was a bookend on my 15-year career as an NVUSD parent, my last NVUSD performance. My daughter Maya is a senior in the choir and the acapella group, and will be graduating on Tuesday and matriculating to UC Davis. So I'm very proud of her. And I will echo what Trustee Gracia said. It is the end of a short era, but a six-year era that comprised the entirety of my daughter's time at Napa High, both of them. And I just want to take a moment to personally thank Duncan Cooper for his six years of just peerless choir education. He's a gifted, gifted educator and musician, and even more gifted at authentically connecting and supporting his students and creating communities. So we are really gonna miss you, Mr. Cooper. And at the very end of the concert, I don't think there was a dry eye in the house. He invited his successor up to conduct the traditional final song, Old Irish Blessing, and he joined his students in the choir. Everybody was bawling. And at the very end, all of the kids spontaneously were clapping for him and chanting, "Cooper, Cooper, Cooper." So I sent him a 10-second clip of that, because everyone, if I had that on clip, I would watch it on my down days. So a little pump-up reel for him if he's feeling down. On June 1st, I had the pleasure of celebrating Mr. Pearson among our colleagues and friends. And again, it was a pleasure to join in that celebration and honoring of his service the next day. Also, I joined Senator, State Senator Dodd and his wife Mary at their home with all of the elected officials. His area is six counties and 22 cities. So that is quite an impressive span to cover. And I want to thank him for his hospitality and especially for his service to our community. On June 5th, I attended last night the special meeting for the Superintendent Evaluation. And I will just end on wishing everyone a Happy Pride Month. I want to thank Trustee Hart in particular for your comments and just reminding us and grounding us again in that it's not just, you know, rainbow gear. It's about making sure that our students feel seen, safe, accepted, and that they feel that they belong. I know that we as a school district and as a community and as a state and as a country have a long way to go still, but I'm proud of our organization and the way, the strides that we have made to increase visibility and support of our marginalized community. Happy Pride, everyone. This concludes my report.
Happy Pride, indeed. I just got, actually, a text message from a student of mine who's going on the AIDS bike ride from San Francisco to Los Angeles. Today was red dress day, okay? So riding a bicycle in a red dress. It's just epic. You know what? I'm gonna cut mine pretty short. We kept seeing each other incessantly, you know? I mean, it was really, you know, a lot of parties this time, you know? But it was, I sort of felt like, oh my gosh, it's like, they're almost my roommates at this point. And, yeah, but it was fun, you know, it was fun. I've been doing lots of community engagement. My arbiter training has been put to the test, and I think it's working. It's great. And I did listen to two webinars, one on the budget, so depressing. And the other one was on curriculum adoption, you know? You know, I always like to keep my hand in. Monday night, I went to the, oh, last week, I went to visit Mrs. Garibaldi's class at Bel-Air and met the students who'd written a letter to us about having ethnic studies in elementary and middle school. And I took them a book and, for their classroom, and we discussed how, you know, ethnic studies can actually be incorporated, you know, in all the classes. And really, a delightful group of people who will be going to middle school next year, and it was fun to talk to them. Get ready, you've got some smarties coming, middle school principals. And then Monday night, I went to the DEI Book Group that meets at, with some of our families, that meets at the Book Mine, Napa Book Mine. And the book they were talking about was Parable of the Sower by Octavia Butler. And we are probably adopting one of her books tonight for curriculum. And she is taught in the colleges and the universities. And I too am going to miss our student board reps. And Dr. Masetti?
Yeah, so before we go to executive staff reports, we wanted to give the board an opportunity to recognize we have both our student board member Finn and we have our student board alternative rep here, Mistura Bunkoli, who's with us. So President Water, do you want to prompt the board? Before we get up to present them their distinguished service award, do you want to prompt the board to say a few words?
Yes. Who would like to go first? Okay.
I have, I mean, I know this is shocking. I've prepared remarks.
Right.
Finn and Mistura, I'm really emotional tonight, so I'm so sorry. I can say this to you both. You've spent a different amount of time on the dais, but what you stand for, what you do as students, and how you use your voice is a reflection of the student body you represent and what a force you two have been. You have never shied away from a question, an opinion, or given your time and attention to the issues that mean something to you, to students, and the district. Finn and Mistura, you are the student face of the Guiding Coalition. Finn, you are the kickoff speaker for the state of the district, where you are a true reminder of why we do the work we do. Mistura, you are a critical voice in the development and execution of dual enrollment, making sure that access and opportunity stays at the forefront of our work. You embody traits that reflect not only you individually, but the student bodies that you represent. Resilience, adaptability, proactivity, perception, perspective, global awareness, and voice. The brilliant use of student voice. You well-represented yourselves and your peers. You strengthened the civic health of NVUSD, something you both should be very proud of. You exhibited a high level of engagement, and you did so with care and capacity. You are both thoughtful, intelligent, confident, and determined. And at a young age, you've adopted a lifelong learning mentality, and we could not be more proud of you. I wish you successful and fulfilling college experiences. And may you find joy in every journey. And when you find your place in the world, I hope this experience played a piece in getting you there. Thank you all for what you've given to the district, your school site, and the examples you have set for your peers. Thank you both very much.
Trustee Gracia.
Student Board Member McGrath, I really enjoyed having you on the board this year and appreciate how deeply involved you became in district affairs as a board member. You were instrumental in the Guiding Coalition process, taking an active leadership role in those meetings. Your comments at the board meeting were always on point, and I respected your willingness to give your unfiltered input on matters before the board. Another aspect of your tenure that was great was your willingness to work with the alternate board member and really include her in part of the process. It felt like your board reports really demonstrated the close relationship you had. I don't think any other student board member during my tenure utilized that relationship with the alternate board member to the extent that you did. And thank you for all the contributions that you made this year. Alternate Board Member Bunkali, you were great as the alternate student board member. You got involved in district activities and were an integral part of building the Guiding Coalition that helped to create our strategic plan. You were active in supporting Trustee McGrath and sharing with him updates on what was happening in your area and at your school. I always appreciated the time we got to spend interacting at the Guiding Coalition and wish you all the best next year.
So I just want to thank you both so very much for bringing the student voice all the time to us in everything that you have done, every committee you've been on. You've done it so graciously and so willingly, and put your entire heart into this. I know that you guys are going to do super well in what you've chosen. Finn over at UCLA and Mistura over at Howard, oh my gosh, you have such bright futures ahead of you. You know, I think every year when we see our student board reps, we think, oh, this is wonderful. I can't imagine topping. You guys topped it. Oh my gosh, you guys so did that. And I am so proud of you guys. And I am so proud of you guys and so in awe. I'm just trying to think, what did I do in my senior year? I don't think I did even a percent of what you did. So thank you so much for being our student board reps this year, and good luck to your future.
To Finn and Mistura both, I offer my gratitude for your energy and your commitment to your school district and to really bringing the student voice, to understanding your role and the importance of your role, and approaching it with such diligence, such intelligence, such poise, and such an amazing ability to articulate not only your experience, but to gather information from others and understand how important it was to get a broad representation of the student experience. We are so lucky to have worked with both of you this year. You have amazing things in store. Come back and keep us posted, and we just wish you all the best at UCLA and Howard. Thank you so much. We're really going to miss you both.
Trustee Hart.
I'm not going to re-say all the cool things everybody said about you, but I agree with them wholeheartedly. I think what's unique about having the participation from both of you this year, and it was great to have both our standard board member and our alternate, is I don't get an opportunity to talk to a lot of students to the degree that we got to know both of you. And you were both so impressive from the very beginning. You spoke eloquently. You're very mature beyond your years. You're committed to your community, and I am constantly impressed by the thoughts and comments that you guys bring forth and the fact that you are representing not just your own interests here, but you're also trying to represent the students in, at your schools. And that's something that we really value very highly, and you've done so in such a great way. You've left very big shoes to fill, so whoever's coming in after you, it's got to, you know, really step up their game in order to hit that. So best of luck to both of you. We know you're going to both be wildly successful in life, and we're just happy to have been a little part of it here in your final year at NVUSD. So thank you.
Well, Trustee Gracia and I did a good job, apparently. Because we were a part of the interview panel and, but we can't take credit for that. It really is, the job is done by you. You demonstrated from the moment we had your application and the interview, and you have just been exemplary in your role as student board reps. Makes me proud because you're part of the NVUSD community, and I hope, you know, in my mind, I like to take credit in thinking, we are here to help you through that journey. And I think we, with you being here at the DIAS and with you, and with you, Mistura, joining us in every way that you possibly could in your role, and I don't think whether you would have been an alternate or not, you would have done that anyways. But I'm so glad that we had you as our alternate. And Finn and I just shared lots of different moments here as we were sitting next to each other and looking at the different complex issues that we were faced here as a school board. But just thank you so much for your, for being you and for demonstrating good collaborative work between the two of you, with your other peers in the other schools, and just really accepting also our invitation to help us share the important voice that you have. And I know that you will do really great in the future, and I guess my only ask is, don't forget about NVUSD. So if you ever want to give back in some way or another, come back to us. This is always your home. So thank you.
That's wonderful. I guess I have just a couple of things to say. I think it was Henry David Thoreau who said, "It's not enough to be good. One must be good for something." And you two are definitely good for something. You know, you already at your age are making our world a better place. I really appreciate your involvement in starting last fall with the future of the district and how you threw yourself into it with all your suggestions and how you inspired other students to speak up and be vocal. You're both so smart. You have so much to say, but you don't take up all the oxygen in the room. You do want to hear what other people have to say. By the way, does anybody here realize that this lady is an excellent actress? I went to see her in the, yeah, I mean, you know, just, I went, I was completely knocked out when I saw her in American Canyon. I have to say that. You know, you both have humor. You've got seriousness of purpose. You care about other people. Miss Von Kole, I will never forget the letter you wrote us, you know, about student safety. You know, I've really taken it to heart, and I just, I want to thank you for that. You know, you're not afraid to speak truth to power. Neither are you. Hang on to those qualities. We need people like you. And what I'd really hope, what I'd really like you to do is, you know, drop us a line once in a while. You know, I mean, I'm not going, it's not like, oh, you haven't written, but, you know, just shoot us an email and, you know, tell me if you want a box of cookies, you know, around October. You'll be, I'll send them to you. You'll be popular in the dorms, believe me. It's proven effective, you know? And I do, I do have a little gift for you, and perhaps Dr. Masetti has something to say.
Yes, I will close this out, and then I want to briefly hear from both students. You know, I just, there's, everything's been said. I do want to say that both Mistura and Finn, to both of you, you know, there's first impression people. I can remember when I, both of you came in for training with President Gracia and I. I remember Mistura came in like very organized, very on her game. I think Finn wore a blazer and a collared shirt. I think you did. Yeah, it was, and it, you've made, both of you make an incredible first impression when someone meets you. I know I felt that way. I think President Gracia, when we did training this summer in orientation. And you just never know, right? That first impression can be like, is that just a first impression? Are they really going to deliver on what you experienced in that first impression? And I just want to tell you both that you over-delivered beyond. We could not imagine two more high-functioning, dedicated. And I would say what's special about the combination of both of you and the work you've accomplished for the district this year is your humility. You're both incredibly humble for how amazing and great and outstanding you are as young people. So thank you for your humility. Thank you for making an incredible first impression and delivering on that first impression through your actions and your presence throughout the year. So we have some service, distinguished service awards for you. There's been a lot of talking. Let's give you the award, and then you can come back to the mic and say thank you if you'd like. So I invite you both to stand up and come up to the front. I think I'm on. On behalf of the Napa Valley Unified School District, Finnegan McGath, I proudly present you with our distinguished service award for serving as the student board trustee in the 23-24 school year. Congratulations to you. And then to Mistura Von Kole, we proudly here in the Napa Valley Unified School District also want to present you with the distinguished service award for your service as the alternate student board representative for the 23-24 school year. Thank you so much for your service. You want to do that now? I'm sure, I know they both want to say a little something. So do you want to come up and do that, and then we'll take a photo?
Hello, everyone. I've been here since August, and I've never spoken in front of you like this, so it's a little intimidating. I didn't prepare anything for this part, so I'm speaking from the heart. I was talking to my mom yesterday, and I might get a little misty, but I was talking to my mom yesterday, and she said something that really stood out to me. She said that throughout all of my years in school, school's been really good to me. And as I reflected on that, I realized how true that is. I've been very lucky to have many leadership positions over the year, over the years, allowing me to advocate for all of my classmates and making sure that everyone's voices are heard. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, that's why I like doing stuff like this. And being on the board with all of you has been a great capstone to all of that. And I couldn't have asked for a better group to share this with. And as I mentioned earlier, I was scared of you guys at the beginning of the year. It was, yeah, it was scary. But you guys are all, have all been very nice to me. You guys haven't scared me away. And I just want to thank you all for that. I also want to thank Mr. Pearson. Throughout the year, when you've done your reports and you've addressed us, you always addressed me as student board member Finn McGrath, and you're the only one who's included the Finn, and I've just really appreciated that. I know, it's only, it's only one word to you, but to me, it's meant a lot. It's meant a lot. And I really appreciate that. To Dr. Ready, thank you. You've been my principal for, I don't know how many years, but you were my principal for some time, and it was a great experience. Thank you to you all.
I don't know how to top that. I just want to say thank you for numerous reasons. One, for seeing me. As a student of color, I think that before I walk into any space, I always have to go in with the mindset that I'm probably going to have to work twice as hard to be seen and for my voice to be heard. That has never been the case with any of you. From the trustees to the assistants to superintendents, it's never been the case. My voice has always been valued. My opinion has always been heard, and you've all taken me seriously. And that means more to me than you'll ever know. As an alternate, initially when I got the position, I was like, oh, darn, I don't get to do a lot. But that's not the case. No, you guys kept me busy, and you made me feel important and like a valued member of this family that you have here, and I couldn't be more grateful. I've had the opportunity to be inspired and empowered by every single one of you. You all are a very important part of the story that I am writing, and where I go from here, I will carry the lessons that I've learned from each and every one of you. And I promise I will never forget the home that I have here at NVUSD. Thank you so much.
We're going to take a short break now. H2, Board Representatives Reports. A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee, Lisa Chu.
We have not met.
Okay. B, City of American Canyon Liaison Reps, Lisa Chu, Eve Reiser.
We have not met.
C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives, Elba Gonzalez-Meriz, Juliana Hart, Robin Jankowicz.
We met today.
Okay. And...
Highlights from the meeting?
Was it fun?
It was a fantastic meeting. I mean, it was one of the better ones over the last years. It was great. We talked about a myriad of things, all relevant to the work we're doing, and please look at the attachment in the next board agenda.
Thank you.
Worth the read.
Thank you. D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives, David Gracia, Robin Jankowicz.
We have not met.
Great. H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff, a distinguished service awards presentation to departing executive cabinet leaders and executive assistant.
Great. Thank you so much, President Water. And eventually, we'll get to the business part of this meeting.
It's fine.
Good evening, NVUSD Board of Education, Staff, and Community. Happy Pride Month to everyone. It's, I'm very, very proud that our school district prides our logo every June, so I'm very grateful that everybody is wearing their pride shirt to kick off Pride Month. Tonight, I'm grateful to share that we are close to wrapping up the 23-24 school year. I want to wish all of our students, teachers, and families a successful closure to the year next week, and of course, a seamless transition to an exciting, enriching summer break. I also want to congratulate the class of 2024. We are thrilled to be hosting many fifth grade promotions, eighth grade promotions, and of course, high school graduations, our world-class style high school graduations throughout next week. Congratulations to all of our students that are reaching important milestones in their educational and personal journeys here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. As we wrap up the 23-24 school year, we are also navigating transitions at the executive cabinet and executive assistant level here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. And I'm just going to give credit to my former boss and superintendent from several years ago in my previous district in San Leandro Unified, Dr. Mike McLaughlin, who trained me, that it is very, very important to always recognize those that work with you at the executive level, because these jobs are very hard, they're very complicated, and anyone who's able to last in them always deserves special recognition. So tonight, during the, so thanks for that training, Dr. McLaughlin. Tonight, during the executive staff reports, we want to take a moment to recognize two of our assistant superintendents, Mr. Mike Pearson and Dr. Pat Andrew Jennings, who are participating in their last Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting in their respective roles this evening. Working as a member of the executive team presents unique challenges and opportunities. Both Mr. Pearson and Dr. Andrew Jennings have done an outstanding job navigating the complexities of their demanding jobs. As we say farewell tonight to both of you, I want to take this opportunity to express my deepest gratitude and appreciation for your incredible contributions to our school district over the past several years, specifically as members again of the executive cabinet team. Your senior leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to excellence have significantly impacted all of our schools, NVUSD staff, of course, our NVUSD students, and it's important to note that in these roles, it is truly at a system-wide level. Each of you has brought unique strengths and perspectives to your roles, working tirelessly to ensure our district's success. Whether it was through improving operational efficiency, enhancing our educational programs, supporting our teachers, or fostering a safe and nurturing environment for all of our students here in the district, your efforts have been truly commendable. Your ability to lead with integrity inspire the teams that you have led over the last several years, and create a positive and collaborative work environment has set a very high standard. Your passion for education and dedication to our NVUSD community have not only made our district a better place, but you have also, while doing that, left a lasting legacy. Tonight, we will present each of you with our NVUSD distinguished service award. So let's get started. Let's begin with Mr. Mike Pearson. Mike, tonight, NVUSD presents you with our distinguished service award for serving as the Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services. So why don't you come up and receive the award at the podium? So I know we're here during executive staff reports, but I know that, again, working at the senior level, you work so closely with the board, and I know the board would appreciate the opportunity to express their gratitude. Mike, would any of the trustees like to address Mr. Pearson?
Trustee Jankowicz.
I've prepared some words. Mr. P. I met Mr. Pearson on his first day as principal at Finch High School. I too, at the time, had a propensity for clipboards. Prior to his arrival, I had put together a to-do list, and I wanted a meeting with this new principal. He apparently felt he had a few other things to take care of his first few weeks, and so I waited. And it was worth the wait. You arrived, you assessed, you picked up trash, and in a move that shook a few, removed the lunch picnic tables in the quad because the kids sat on the tables and not the benches. You told them they didn't- You told them, they didn't believe you. You removed them, and they believed you from that moment forward. It worked. You set a standard, a reasonable standard, that had not existed in an institutionalized manner for a very long time. You were unapologetic for all the right reasons. You understood the importance of building a strong culture on a high school campus. You knew every kid's name. You were everywhere. And the kids responded. They felt a sense of pride, ownership of their school and belonging. You were at every event, function, celebration, meeting. If it involved kids, you were there every single time. You were task-driven, but as I always say, ad nauseam, ask my peers, tasks, bullet points are a function, a measurement of something bigger. In all those tasks, they created a community, a condition and an environment that was best for kids. Years passed, and now I had to address you as Assistant Superintendent Pearson. And as expected, you changed a few things. For one, you expanded the definition of site visits. I initially envisioned myself just visiting school sites, but before I knew it, Assistant Superintendent Pearson had me on bus trips to Berriessa, in Nosh kitchens at 5:30 a.m., shadowing Jackie Clayton at Harvest Middle School, learning field maintenance, maintenance and gopher eradication at Vintage High School, learning about the mechanical upkeep of vehicles. And then he had me sit in the bus driver's seat so I could understand the challenge of keeping care of students while driving on an enormous, in an enormous vehicle, needing to keep eyes on the road and the children. I learned lessons in perspective. So MP, thank you for your time, your service and your unwavering dedication to the students of NVUSD. And if you get back in your next chapter, a fraction of what you gave in your last 30, you're going to have an outstanding retirement.
Trustee Garcia.
So I first met Mike Pearson when he was an assistant principal at Vintage High School. I didn't have much interaction with Mike at that point. As a student, I was only cursorily aware of him. He was just that hard-charging dude, always enthusiastically on the move with the unusual haircut. It was only after becoming a trustee that I began to know Mike Pearson better. He was one of the first hirees made by Dr. Mercedes and was one of the people she leaned on for support in those early years as the district office was being renamed. Despite his penchant for tiny fonts, I grew to enjoy interacting with Mike as he spent a fair bit of time together on the Facilities and Technology Committee. We both grew our understanding of construction projects and change orders in those meetings. I think we share a similar sense of humor and have enjoyed some good jokes and fun stories over the years. I appreciate the time and dedication Mike has to this job and the vast improvements he's made to the district. I'm particularly appreciative of the changes he spearheaded to the facilities assessment system. I would like to conclude by saying thanks to Mike Pearson for your many years of service. And then I would like to present you with this certificate. You may be the only one in the room who can actually read the certificate, but for those of us who have normal eyesight, it says, "This acknowledges that Mike Pearson has successfully accomplished mastering the world's smallest font size within NVUSD communication documents, leaving a micro legacy throughout the organization."
Micro legacy.
I'll take it.
Okey-doke. Who's next? Trustee Chu.
So should I, should I go on the same, when I met Mike? Sure. So I met Mike, Mr. Pearson, when we were discussing ACMS II. And it was really enlightening to understand facilities as a parent, because of course, that's never, ever communicated to us. We were always thinking about what's the new shiny thing. And you gave us a reality check, for better or for worse. I think it's for the better, because we really needed to understand what facilities' needs are for the entire school district, not just for one small population. And you did that. So, and I want to also publicly acknowledge that I think you were one of the key instrumental people in making sure that American Canyon was, was taken care of with Measure H. I know it was a very difficult time during that time when the community realized they weren't going to get a second middle school. But you did a fantastic job on your very first complete build or remodel of a school that is ACMS. And that is, that was a feat that I think most people don't realize. And I think that is what led to the passage of Measure A II. And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for all that you've done for not only American Canyon, but the broader NVUSD community. And I, I think you were the perfect person for that job. And thank you very, very much.
Trustee Reiser.
Assistant Superintendent Pearson, I, I echo all of the wonderful comments from the other trustees and will just add my gratitude to you for your dedication to the organization, the way you brought your diligence and your kind of system-wide organizational approach to the work that had to be done within the facilities. Just as a new trustee to now, the last three and a half, going on four years, to have seen the enormous amount of work you did in taking in the scope of what needed to be organized and named and prioritized within our, our whole system and all of the facilities, that's a huge lift. And you did it with such precision and, and an eye for the right priorities. And you always brought, always bring, continue to bring an enormous amount of heart to the work. It's always so clear that the students are at the center of your prioritizing and of your dedication and your passion for the work. And I'm so impressed with your longevity, the ability to transition from, from teacher to administrator to district office administrator. You've worn so many hats, and now here at the end, you have just stepped in, in ways that no one else really could have at American Canyon High School, with the same kind of gravitas and experience and confidence that helped settle that situation there and, and make that community feel cared for and safe at a disrupted time. I wish for you that you find your next thing, that you can funnel and focus your amazing boundless energy and ideas and positivity. Because whatever it is that you choose to do, that I just can't, it's going to be amazing to see the, the end results of where you, where you channel that, that fire hose of amazing energy next. So we're going to miss you, but we're very grateful for all of your service and your help. Thank you.
Hi, Mike. I actually don't know Mike as long as most of the rest of you up here, but my first encounter with Mike was over at Pueblo Vista. I had showed up to, to help serve Thanksgiving lunch, and Mike was there. And he was, he was scooping out mashed potatoes right, right along with the rest of us, you know? And I think that's very indicative of Mike's personality. He's the get-it-done guy, you know? And the one that you can depend on to handle things. And I, I feel a great amount of appreciation for that. He's always been extremely gracious and put up with a million questions from me in all different directions. I even got to see the super top-secret Indiana Jones map room over in the facilities area. That was really cool and impressive and have, you know, just kind of a nerdy thing that, that's back there. But, you know, to see your legacy, Mike, and to see, out at your, your retirement party, to see the amount of lives that you've touched here at the district and, and the memories that people hold dear of you, that's amazing. And that, that's something you must be so proud of. And we've been very proud to have you, you know, in this role here. And I've appreciated everything you've done over the last year. So thank you so much, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Trustee Gonzalez-Meriz.
First of all, is this Mike Pearson? Because the energy you showed with the students of the month and just, it was just really, I think for me, just hoping that that's an indication of what's next for you, that it is the excitement and at the same time, of course, the sadness that comes in, in leaving a place that was your second home or maybe your first home. I don't know, because I don't know how you got all of those things without making this your 24/7 schedule every day. But just really appreciative of, I think, just when I, when I think of you, Mike, it's, 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 you're, you're wanting to create the best space for your, for the students and for the staff. And I think you carried that thought with you everywhere you went, just thinking of, of, of those people, the people around you, like, what are they going to think? How is this going to feel? What does that mean? And then hearing and listening about, well, what voices do I need to make sure are here? Or I learned something new today, so let me make sure I incorporate that. I think also, who would have known that as entering Assistant Superintendent, we'd be faced with so many hard decisions from talking about our not, you know, building of a, of a second middle school? And going through that process, school closures, being probably more fully aware of all the facility situation of all of our school sites and helping map out what that means so that we can make the best decision from this side of our work. The pandemic, and then also building, you know, the, the first team of city as we were helping navigate the leader of the organization in going through a very tough time and just seeing that kindness from you. So I think that's it. Like, I see you as a community builder, and I'm glad that you got to do that here at NVUSD and building those communities across your own campus as you started as a principal or in, in, with Vintage, but just across all of our campuses. So thank you for being that community builder.
Trustee Finn McGrath.
Thank you. Thank you. As President Water just highlighted, that was one of the things that I appreciated from you most this year. But Dr. Mercedes said something earlier about first impressions. And I think that's absolutely true with you. I mean, I've only known you this year. But when I met you at the beginning of the year, you seemed like a really just kind guy who, who cares about other people, and that's held true throughout the year. And that's absolutely showed today when you were introducing the, the students and advertising the kid as a future TV veterinarian. Yeah, you're, throughout this year, you, you've, you know, come across as just a really genuine person. And I know, hearing what everyone is saying, that that's been true throughout the whole time that you've worked here. And I wish you well in, in your future beyond NVUSD.
Well, I'm not going to, I don't think I can top my speech over the, that I gave over the weekend, so I'm not even going to try, but.
No way.
Yeah, you know, that one, that one's one and done. But actually, I didn't, it wasn't that I met Mike, but I heard about him. He had this fearsome legend that swirled around the halls of Redwood where my son went, and he told, and he'd come home and repeat these, you know, outlandish tales about Mike that were not true. One of them was, a little girl came in with her hair twirled up in pigtails like devil horns, and Mike cut them off. That was absolutely not true, but it certainly, it certainly, I mean, it was, you know, completely nutty and absolutely untrue. But I guess it's one way to maintain order among adolescents. And, and then, you know, I met him on a, on an ill-fated job application, which you don't even remember, it's so insulting, at Vintage. And then he was, and then he was my, he was my summer school, he was my summer school principal and was really good to me when I came down with a horrible illness. He was very kind-hearted, and I taught his kids. And you know what? No matter how eccentric or, you know, terrifying a person is, if they have nice children, it does tell you that, you know, well, there's something there. He's a good person. And he had delightful children, perfectly delightful. And, and then, you know, I end up here, working with him. And of course, you know, all the excitement, all the drama, going to work in the kitchen and ride the school bus and have Gloria drag me all over the place, absolutely, from hell to breakfast. And I was half-dead when I got back. And she was just bright as a button and perky. And I was thinking, what do these people in maintenance and operations eat for breakfast? I mean, I'm half-dead. And, and then, and then COVID hit. And here's an opportunity for all of us to step up and be heroic. And, and you know, Mike was out there on the front line, handing out food, you know, every day. I mean, this was, this was great. I really think this was NVUSD's finest hour. Like, you know, how we were looking out for the least of us, you know, through this whole disaster. And then somehow, I got, I got hit with the feral cat detail. I had people worried about the feral cats, and they were, I had, I got emails from New England, people worried about the cats being mistreated. And I'm having to, I'm having, you forgot about, I didn't forget about it. And I'm having to tell them that, yes, I love cats. No, the only reason I don't have a cat is because I'm allergic to cats, because I used to have 14 cats. I got sensitized, and it's just going, na, 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 na. So anyway, Mike, I still think you are the person least suited to retirement of anyone I've ever met. I mean, oh, yes, I'm going to go home and just relax and not do anything. This is not you. And I cannot talk him into joining master gardeners with me. He will not do that for some reason. But, but, you know, it's the weirdest thing. I have become a cat lady, and I have a, have a heart trap in the back of my car, and I'm down there at the Free Spade Clinic like once a month, once a week. And maybe you could help me with this. It's really very fulfilling.
All right, great. Well, Mike, would you like to address the board? Abruptly and quickly.
Let me count the ways how I'm going to segue from that. I do want to make one more, one comment about the American Canyon High School. And I told the faculty this yesterday. And I, you know, for me, and I'll comment on this later, and you've heard this before, though. For me, it was unbelievable for me to go and, you know, be a student here and then, and be, and go back and be the principal at Redwood and be the principal at Vintage. It means just, who does that? And, but I had always thought my, you know, I always thought to myself, you know, what would it be like to be down at American Canyon High School? I always had, for some reason, I, I thought about that, that institution and that place. And, and, you know, I never thought like I would be down there, to be quite honest with any of you. And then when Dr. Mercedes asked me if I would help out and do this, you know, and initially, there was some trepidation. But, you know, I honestly, you know, couldn't think of probably a better way to go back, go out, you know, you know, with that. I mean, it's been hard with leaving, you know, Gloria and Albert and Justin and Kristen, and I'll mention them in just a second here. But just having that opportunity. And I think, you know, all of you having that trust in me to go down and do that really meant a lot to me, and I want you to, to know that, okay? So Albert and Gloria, I know you're here. Justin and Kristen are online, but would you guys come up here for a second? Have a seat right here, please. So while they're coming up, let me, I'm going to take a few minutes to, so please indulge me. I want to first thank the executive cabinet team, Dana, Pat and Rob. Serving alongside each of you has been a worthwhile experience, and I will look back fondly on my time as part of this important team as we partnered, making decisions, always looking through the lens of what is best for students. Going forward, and as you welcome Dr. Mercedes, excuse me, Dr. Monica Ready to the executive cabinet team, while Pat and I exit, I encourage each of you to continue always doing what is best for students. And since that is ultimately why we're in the business of education. Dr. Mercedes, I can't thank you enough for promoting me to the executive cabinet team. When I left Vintage High School to take the executive director's position in 2018, I never expected to be, to be moved on to your leadership team. But a year later, there I was, serving as Assistant Superintendent in the district. That has provided so much for me and my family. So I want to thank you for your trust, for your collaboration. your collaboration, for your mentorship and for your leadership. Just been amazing, honestly. Board of Education Trustees, I'm pretty certain that few, very few people really, and I mean really, understand the time and energy a board member must dedicate to be an elected official. It's not an easy job to be a board member, but each of you has demonstrated thoughtfulness, compassion, dedication, leadership and effective governance during your term. The NVUSD community is extremely fortunate to have such a devoted and diverse leadership team. You each bring a unique perspective. The consideration of time you take in making decisions often goes unnoticed, but I know that the students of NVUSD are the benefactors of your consideration, your time that you take in your decisions. Keeping the students of NVUSD at the forefront is truly admirable and as a member of the NVUSD and the greater Napa American Canyon community is very much appreciated by myself and peers that I have. I'm definitely going to miss each of you and please know that I will be a champion for each of you in the future. So wanted Albert and Gloria here and, like I said, I think Kristen and Justin are online, but I need to finally recognize these four incredibly important leaders in Napa Valley Unified School District, specifically the Director of Transportation, Justin Binion, the Director of Food Service, Kristen Teakill, the Director of Maintenance and Operations, Albert, grounds, excuse me, Albert De Souza, and the Director of Operations, Gloria Aguirre. These four individuals, in my opinion, are the heart and soul of the school district and I cannot thank each of them enough for their leadership. As you know, I've never worked in another district, so I don't have the ability to make comparisons of similar directors in other districts. However, I can make distinction between the managers that I've worked with over my career. And I can tell everyone in this room and online that these four leaders are a class of their own. I have, I've continuously challenged each of them while they have served in their role. I've brought new vernacular on practices for them to digest, such as vision, mission, essential outcomes, PLCs, learning walks, community groups, checking for understanding, think pair share and getting to know you statements such as, if you knew me well, you would know, and they fill in, that I'm awfully demanding. I instituted organizational systems and practices that sometimes made their head spins. I harped on the use of data to drive our decision-making. I made sure everyone, made sure everyone the directors hired understood that the operations team impacted student learning. I relentlessly expected a high level of customer service and relations and told them that relationships really matter because everyone wants to be part of something bigger. And I have sent texts, emails and made phone calls to these individuals 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I basically ran operation as one humongous school site because that's what I knew. And you know what? I think it worked because these four leaders responded. That's not to say there were never bumps in the road because there were and still will be, but never once did Albert, Justin, Kristen or Gloria waver or flinch. Now, you might be thinking that it was always a one-way street with the directors and myself, but it was not, and that's what I love and appreciate about Kristen, Justin, Gloria and Albert. We, and I mean we, developed a really excellent, positive working relationship built on trust, collaboration and a high level of communication with each other and the NVUSD community. As much as I brought to the directors, each of these individuals brought equal, if not more help to, more help, more to help me be a better leader and a better person. Although I enjoyed the heck out of being a school site leader, I am so thankful I was able to end my career with Operational Services Team. The leaders and employees who comprise operations in NVUSD do their work every day with energy and enthusiasm without fanfare, and this challenged me to bring my A-game to each of them every day. Gloria, Kristen, Albert and Justin, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the partnership, professionalism and leadership. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with each of you. You've done an outstanding job and I'm anxious to see how your leadership continues to flourish in your respective departments. And Gloria and Albert, I have not forgotten that both of you stuck your neck out for me six years ago when I interviewed. Thank you, guys. Finally, I've spent over 40 years in NVUSD, more than two-thirds of my life as a student, a coach, a teacher, an administrator, even a parent with NVUSD. Who would have thought when my parents moved to Napa in 1975 that NVUSD would one day be my second home, would be a second home to me and my family? I've worked alongside amazing people and witnessed the transformation of thousands of students. I've walked the halls, sat in classrooms, run on fields and gyms, not only as a kid, but also as a site principal at two schools I attended while growing up, Redwood Junior High School and Vintage High School. Who gets to do that? I can't tell you how proud I was to be principal of the two schools I haunted as an adolescent and young adult. As I wrap up, I cannot be more pleased to have been an employee in this district for the past 33 years. The opportunities afforded to me have been countless and I have not taken for granted my career in NVUSD. Truthfully, the only thing left for me to accomplish was to be superintendent, as Mary Snyder, a former secretary for me, once predicted. But don't worry, Dr. Mercedi, I'm done. I'm done. Hopefully, but where am I at? Here we go. My passion, I'm done. My passion for education, for the education of students in Napa and American Canyon schools will persist, but my involvement in education will be different. And finally, before I conclude, I'm going to share with you four short quotes that have resonated with me as an educator and hopefully, one or all will resonate with you. First is by Maya Angelou, which every person needs a place that is furnished with hope. And second by Cesar Chavez, preservation of one's own culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures. And third by Leo, I always mess his name, Vygotski, children grow into the intellectual life around them. And finally, this is a personal one that I found three years ago and it's really changed my life. Maybe the journey isn't so much about becoming anything. Maybe it's about unbecoming everything that isn't really you so you can be who you were meant to be in the first place. Thank you all.
All righty, so continuing, this is the Superintendent Report. We will get to the business part of this meeting, I promise. So next, we would like to honor Dr. Pat Andrew Jennings. Pat, tonight, NVUSD presents to you, presents you with our distinguished service award for serving as the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Support Services since 2020. Let's come up to the podium and give you your award. And as I said, you know, our board members work so closely with our Executive Cabinet members, so I'd like to offer the board an opportunity to address Dr. Andrew Jennings and thank her for her service.
Graha?
Before we go into that, I noticed that whoever wanted to speak on the Zoom earlier about Mike Pearson is still on the Zoom.
Oh, public comment, oh, you're right. There's, might be someone online who wants to talk about Mr. Pearson. Do we have a public comment about that? Just hang on.
Yes, we do. Let's see, Justin Paul to speak. Go ahead, please.
You, Emmy, it's almost time to go bed. I want to just say, Mike Peering, I hold you in this room because you remember me, you were a dean at the middle school, I was a where, I was in the physical classroom, E8, Boyman Ride class, and you always made me, my eye was open and shining. I will be missed, I will be missed, Mike Peering. He always comes down the school doing his lunch meal for COVID. We will miss, I will be missed, Mike Peering. You remember him. Thank you. You are doing great person and thank you for taking over Don Heaven. Thank you.
That is so sweet.
Okay, trustees, Dr. Andrew Jennings.
Dr. Andrew Jennings, congratulations. Thank you for all you have done on behalf of our students. Congratulations. I'm going to sneeze, I'm so sorry. Pardon me, excuse me, excuse me. You've been such a critical voice in striving for achievement for all of our students. Thank you for your strong character, your deep care and your deep belief in the work. You are the heart of instruction and I know you will bring that same heart to Benicia. How wonderful that you get to go home and bring all that you've learned and all that you have to share to a community that will embrace you. We know you're going to do very great things.
All right, Dr. Pat Andrew Jennings. I enjoyed working with Pat and getting to know her better through our curriculum meetings. I would say that Pat was good natured, as some of those curricular meetings could get a bit contentious at times, but you could tell it didn't really bother her. I think one of my favorite memories at a curriculum meeting was when we were discussing, I don't remember exactly the topic, but I was certainly going into one of my firm explanations around one of the issues I saw as a problem with our system. And she chuckled a little under her breath as she had heard this before, but some of the others in the meeting, to whom I was directing my comments, were getting my thoughts for the first time. It was at that moment that I knew we were going to get along just fine. I would say it wasn't until Assistant Superintendent started coming to AEC with us that I got to know Pat as more of a person than just as Assistant Superintendent. I had the opportunity to get to know more about her and we had several conversations over meals that we shared at the AEC conferences. I'm glad for the opportunity to get to know her and wish her the best of success in her new position in Benicia. Thank you.
I think when, well, first of all, congratulations, Dr. Pat Andrew Jennings. I know that was, it was, yes. And just being through that journey with you somewhat, as you were trying to get your coursework and work, so I don't know how you went about doing that, but you made that happen. I think when, when, when the work that we are as Board of Trustees faced with, it's really important for us to be able to have an understanding on the different departments and work that's happening. Like trustee Gracia, I got to experience more of what that knowledge is and information through the Curriculum Committee and just try to dive into that information as much as possible, the complexity of it. But one of the things that I think I always appreciated from you was definitely this vision of all of our students. And you can go really micro into an issue or a school or a curriculum or a book, but it always, I always appreciated your ability to be able to pull us back and see the big picture and why things were happening in the way that they were happening. And I think that allows for clarity, especially when you're trying to navigate a really complex system when it comes to education. And I think that quality, to be able to bring that almost like calmness to the topic, that could be very personal to some, to folks, to our community, to parents, to students, to teachers, to staff, in a way to be able to just see that for, for what it is and be able to absorb that information and then do something about it. And that, I think, creates change and it helps move goals forward in an area when it is your area, which is, it's a very, not an easy one for sure. I think none of them are easy, but something with instruction is just got its own little world and just really appreciated that from you. And I thank you for that because I think you have left us in a really strong place to be able to continue, and I think that's something I would want if I were leaving somewhere, am I leaving it better? Am I leaving it in a place that things can move on and go from there? And I think that's exactly what you have been able to accomplish here, so I really appreciate that on behalf of our NVUSD community.
Hi, Pat. Dr. Andrew Jennings officially, no, we like saying that, though, it's nice. I have genuinely appreciated everything that you've brought to us here at the board level. When I first joined this board, I don't come from an educational background, I'm not an instructional specialist, I don't understand your world very well, but you have always been very kind and gracious in answering, again, all my millions of questions and, you know, taking the time to meet with me and go over details and really make sure I understood the background to some of these complex, complex topics that we are addressed with. And I very much appreciate that and the leadership that you've given to your staff because they reflect your graciousness as well in the way that they interact with us. So thank you very much for everything that you've done for us here at NVUSD and I know Benicia is going to love you and I'm jealous of your commute, that's amazing, but thank you for everything. Please let us know how you are and come visit us and best of luck with everything.
So the first time I heard about you was that first school board meeting when everything was online and you got appointed as the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. And I was thinking to myself, wow, we're just about to get into this pandemic that we know nothing about and you are taking on this humongous lift. And that is the focus of most parents', you know, anxieties during this time. And after joining the board, I knew that your calm and your grace as you're explaining to me, you know, non-educator here, about curriculum during our curriculum meetings, that was, you are a master teacher. And I can tell you that I was on that committee with, everybody else was a teacher, basically. My two board members who are, you know, my fellow board members who were there were also former teachers. The staff were teachers. I was the only non-credentialed teacher there, so I learned a lot, needless to say, from everyone, but I think with your guidance for the department and really communicating what the bigger picture was, really allowed me to have a much better understanding about, you know, what we're here to do and what I think most of us really want to do is the academic part for our children. So thank you so much for bringing that to NVUSD and good luck in Benicia.
Dr. Andrew Jennings, I'm so proud of you for taking that on during the time that you were also doing an enormously hard job, so I just have, first of all, so much admiration for you to have taken that on and succeeded and become Dr. Andrew Jennings while also performing at such a high level in such a big job. You were appointed to that role and then our school shut down the next day and I just can't even imagine how that transformed what is already a bear of a job into something that everybody was madly trying to write the script to as it was happening. You were flying the plane while building it and you got us there and we owe you a debt of gratitude for managing with such groundedness and calm and steadiness and vision and intelligence and experience. So we are so grateful and I just, again, want to thank you for your dedication and everything that you brought, everything that my fellow trustees have said here, the range of considerations, the heart that you bring to the work, the awareness of the span of needs and abilities that you have to address and honor and respect. And you did that with such style and class and. And you, you did that with such style and class and grace. And I'm so excited for you to close out your education career in your home district where you live. They are so lucky to have you and will miss you. Take good care and keep in touch.
Well, I can't give you a raucous send-off like, as I gave Mike, because basically, you're the perfect lady, and it just doesn't work. But, but yes, I was, I was grinning when David was recognizing the fact that he can be just a little bit didactic and minatory, you know, when he appears on a, on a committee, and sometimes I'm not too far behind him. You know, the, as, as you said, you know, something happens. Old teachers, you know, never stop being teachers, never want to, never are, just we're, it's hard for us not to micromanage, Mr. Pearson. And, and you're always so patient and kind and willing to explain things. It's, and yes, every time I look at you, you're so calm, and you appear so calm, and yet, you know, I just wonder what went through your head when we appointed you, and then all of a sudden, schools are closed down, and those of us who were foolish were thinking, oh, it's only for a couple of weeks, and those of us who were realists were going, oh, this is going to be a long haul. And dealing with the, the online meetings, you know, the community meetings, the parents who were, you know, anxious about so many things, about their children's instruction, their children's health, in some cases, you know, where their, where their next meal was coming from. I mean, we had so much to deal with, but, you know, you, you really showed us the way. And I'm, I was always very proud to have you as a representative of the Napa Valley Unified School District. Thank you for your service, and Benicia's very fortunate.
Dr. Andrew Jennings, would you like to address the board?
Thank you all for those very warm, kind comments. It's, I do have some prepared remarks, but I'm actually just going to speak from the heart. It's like a little trip down memory lane, as you guys shared about my appointment on March 12th of 2020. I had a beautiful entry plan that I had prepared to start, and all the things that I was going to accomplish in those first three to six months, and all of that just got thrown out the window during that, that first, those first two months were, were absolutely, what was the word, unprecedented, right? Like, that was the word. So, it's been nice to hear all of that and just the, where we are today and where we are as an organization in terms of positioning to really take off, and I'm really proud of that work. I do want to thank the board and Dr. Masetti for entrusting me with the leadership of the Instructional Support Services Division. It has been quite the wild ride over the last four years, and I have just embraced it and enjoyed most of it. And I have taken a tremendous amount of, I've learned a tremendous amount of, in terms of how I lead, what my areas of growth are, what things I do well, and it's just been such a, a growth experience for me, and I'm looking forward to applying those, the things that I've learned in my, my new position in Benicia. That said, my dissertation was titled Change the Water, Not the Fish, and it really looked at culture and how to create a sense of belonging in an organization. And that is something that I have worked over the last four years in my division to really create that. And with that, I really want to address my amazing director team, Director Manning and Director, Director Dr. Reddy, and Director Knox, and Director Christopherson, and Executive Director Rossetti, and just say, thank you all. I have appreciated being on this journey with you. It would not have been the same without you. I appreciate that you let me lead and then let me lean on you sometimes, and I really appreciated that for the last four years that, to get us to where we are today. And I have a tremendous amount of confidence that Dr. Reddy will pick up where we are and move the organization, especially around academic achievement where we need to go. And, like I said, and to Dr. Masetti, thank you for trusting me with this opportunity and encouraging me to pursue it, and I've learned a tremendous, tremendous amount. So, with that, I'm going to conclude, because it is like as what-
Really late.
What was his name? Was his name Nick? Is that the student, the-
Justin.
Justin. It's almost his bedtime, so it's getting, so with that, I am going to conclude and just thank you all.
Thank you, Pat. All right. I'm almost done here with my superintendent report and the recognition. So, in addition tonight, we are also honoring one of our executive assistants, Ms. Julie Prezi, who supports the executive team and the Board of Education. Julie, during your tenure as executive assistant, your dedication, your world-class professionalism, and incredible efficiency have been integral to the smooth operation of the senior team, our Board of Education, and really, in many ways, the entire Napa Valley Unified School District. Your special ability to manage complex schedules, handle countless simultaneous tasks, tasks with the utmost grace and precision, attend to absolutely every single detail, and provide invaluable assistance has been nothing short of remarkable, and I have worked with many executive assistants. But you're top of class, Julie. You do everything with a smile and the most positive inspirational energy. It's actually contagious. You have consistently gone above and beyond, ensuring that every detail is attended to, and every challenge or problem is always met with a solution. We all love that about you. She never stays in the problem, she always shifts us towards a solution. Beyond your professional skills, Julie, your warmth, your kindness, and positive attitude have made a significant impact on everyone who has had the pleasure and honor of working with you. Your ability to create a welcoming and supportive environment here at the Ed Center and in the business office specifically, and also here in our boardroom, as you support us in the background every other Thursday and then some, has not only enhanced our work as a governance team and a senior team, but has also fostered an incredible sense of team and a highly collaborative spirit. You will truly be missed. So, lastly, tonight, we would like to honor Ms. Julie Prezi. Julie, tonight, NVUSD presents you with our Distinguished Service Award for serving as the Executive Assistant to the Business Office. Why don't you come on up and receive that award? Okay, and the board knows, the magic behind the scene is definitely with Ms. Morales and Ms. Prezi and the outstanding work that they do. Would the board like to say any words to Julie before she leaves the podium?
Trustee Gracia.
Okay. Julie Prezi. Julie is the occasional scheduler of meetings with Assistant Superintendent Manguala, the occasional disembodied voice in the boardroom calling for roll call votes, and occasionally the delivery, deliverer of food for closed sessions. While I haven't had a ton of opportunity to interact with Julie outside of the above-mentioned activities, each time we have interacted, she has been kind, caring, and warm. I wish her the best in her retirement.
Ms. Prezi. There will be more comments to follow at a later time, but I will be brief with these. The board knows you as the consummate professional. The board knows you as the keeper of all information, a vast amount of institutional memory. The board knows you as someone who is always kind, firm, and fair. The board knows you as an integral part of not only the business office, but the culture of NVUSD. And you're a world traveler, barnhouse coffee drinker, occasionally other brown liquids, funny, witty, unbelievably thoughtful, compassionate, and a generous friend, always checking in on us in a myriad of ways. You are so entwined in the fabric of NVUSD. Thank you for all you have done, not only for NVUSD as a whole, but for each and every one of us individually. You will be missed, but we are going to celebrate all that lies before you, and the celebrations are to continue.
I can go. Hi, Julie. I think you were probably the first person I met when I first walked into this boardroom at 5:00, not knowing closed session and what all that meant and where I was and what direction was up at that point. But Julie was very kind, as she always is, and, and explained everything to me and, and helped me down the right path, and has continued to do so throughout our interactions over the past couple of years. I, I can't imagine the amount of knowledge, like Robin was saying, that's in your head about how this district operates and, and functions, and, and the benefit that we've had to have you here for so many years to share that with us. So, thank you so much for everything you've done for me, for the board, and I hope you have an amazing adventures ahead of you in your retirement.
Trustee Finn McGrath.
I just want to thank you because every board meeting that I'd come into, I'd get in here and the room would be pretty much empty, but you'd be in here and you'd greet me with a smile, and you'd ask me how I'm doing and, and start a conversation with me. And, and it's been really nice, because I'm, I sit down, and I'm not just sitting here in an empty room, but I sit down and I get to talk to you, and it's been, it's, it's been nice. And as Dr. Masetti said, you're a very warm person, and I felt that warmth when you would greet me when I'd walk in here. So, I appreciate that, and I wish you the best of luck.
Trustee Gonzalez Maras.
Julie, I think, you know, we, we are fully aware, I am fully aware, and some of it probably no clue, but of everything, are you, like, it must be so much that you, you are managing. And I think what makes it a superpower is that you, it, for us to not see it, almost fully understand it, it's what is your power. I hope that makes sense, right? Because I think it takes someone pretty special to be able to enter this workspace in that we can focus on doing what we're set out to do. And, and to, to be able to get to that point requires thousands of steps in order for us to be able to sit here calmly and do our job. And that is, that can't be overstated at all. And, and I think what makes it even more special about you is just how you make us feel. You know, when we come, when I come into the boardroom, there are times where it's like, I'm anxious, I'm nervous, we have hard topics, there was, might be, you know, hard conversations, discussions, the public, and just for that one second, you make me feel like it's going to be okay. And you humanize me when I walk in. Like, how are, like, you're genuinely like, how are you doing? I really wanted to sit down and just chat with you for like, forget the board meeting, let's just chat. But we, you know, we have a job to do. But I just, I thank you for, for, for creating that, that space for us to be able to do what we got to do, and for seeing the human in me when I would walk in, and I think my peers feel the same way, too, in that sense that, thank you for just almost letting us know everything's going to be okay. And I think that makes a pretty special person, because it comes with a pretty special soul, and I think you have that, and I think people feel that when they meet you. So, thank you.
I have known you for three and a half years, and in the entire three and a half years, you have been the board's version of SEL. We talk about SEL for our students, and, you know, I think SEL is needed everywhere. And I know that you've seen everything that we've done and everything you support us in. I feel like you did it with such ease and such grace, and that really made it so much easier when we have to do the work. So, thank you for being that SEL support for us, and I think we've all communicated that in some ways. And enjoy your retirement. Yay!
Julie, I'll just echo what you've heard already, but you just embody such authentic warmth and kindness, and I also had that experience of coming in for the first time. I don't even think it was for my first meeting, I think it was ahead of time, some kind of paperwork, and I was nervous and didn't know the deal, and, you know, and you just put me at ease immediately with your warmth and your kindness. But it was also so clear that you were about a whole lot more than your authentic warmth and kindness, but that you have an amazing acuity and focus on details and professionalism and competence that helps keep this very complex organization with millions of moving parts running smoothly. And I think it's the kind of thing where if you weren't doing what you were doing, we would know, we would know pretty quickly. So, I'm so happy for you to be embracing retirement and all the adventures that lie ahead, and I hope that we, that you won't be a stranger. You don't have to come to the meetings, but, but please, but maybe you will, just for old time's sake, knowing you can leave at any time. But we sure will miss you and are so grateful for your service and your dedication. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up SEL. I was going to bring up Arbinger. You know, we're going through this training to keep people like me from having every single capillary in our eyeballs explode when someone criticizes us. I mean, it's actually working. But, but, you know, you were obviously born with it. In addition to perfect hair, and you're always nicely dressed, it's just a, it's just a pleasure to just see you and when, because this is, this can be, you know, very high pressure. And, and you're a lot of fun, you know, with your travels and your sister and, you know, you just, the things, you know, you're interested in. And I just, I'm kind of jealous, you know, and I'd be, I can only take a short trip this year, and, you know, you're going to be off, you're going to be seeing the world, continuing to see the world. But you've always made us, you've made me feel maybe not perfectly collected, but a lot calmer when I walk into this room, and I think it, it helps me be a better board member. I know it does. So, thank you so much for everything.
Julie, would you like to say anything to the board? Microphone, Julie.
I was doing that on purpose.
You can do it, Julie.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I've been very, very blessed to have such an amazing job. I love my business office, I love my superintendent's office, and the board's been a pleasure to work with. The district has been, I've just been very blessed, and I'm so thankful to everybody, especially for, to Rosanna, Dr. Masetti, thank you so much for everything that you've done for me, your belief in me, and I will miss everybody.
I'll miss you too, Julie. Thank you. All right. So, as you all move on to your new adventures, we will undoubtedly feel the void left by your departures. We wish the three of you the best in the next chapters of your journeys. We're excited for the three of you, Mike, Julie, Pat, as you embark on the next chapter of your lives. So, now, we will have our assistant superintendents present their reports. We will start out with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division. Go to work, Ms. Page.
As fast as I can. Good evening, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative Finn McGrath. On behalf of the Human Resources Department, we would like to acknowledge and celebrate Pride Month. At NVUSD, we are proud of having a workplace that is supportive of LGBTQ employees. When individuals can bring their whole selves to work regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, they are more likely to feel valued, respected, and motivated to contribute their best. It also helps attract top talent from diverse backgrounds as individuals seek workplaces that uphold principles of equality and fairness at their core. that uphold principles of equality and fairness at their core. Additionally, a supportive workplace for LGBTQ employees can lead to increased collaboration, creativity, and innovation as diverse perspectives are embraced and different experiences are shared. Ultimately, by creating an environment that is accepting and supportive, we create a vibrant and inclusive community that benefits everyone involved. N V U S D H R has clear policies that prohibit discrimination of employees based on sexual orientation and gender identity readily available through our website and regularly communicated. We have safe reporting mechanisms to allow employees to raise concerns without fear of retribution and a zero tolerance towards LGBTQ plus discrimination. We promptly address any reported incidents. We are committed to periodically evaluating all of our district's diversity and inclusion efforts to help identify areas for improvement and ensure LGBTQ plus inclusivity is a priority. We know that there's much more that could and should be done. We are inspired, though, by the leadership of the Board of Trustees, the superintendent, our instructional division, and our school sites, who have demonstrated their commitment to LGBTQ inclusivity. And our H R department is proud to support these efforts to foster a more inclusive and productive environment for everyone. Thank you. This concludes my report, except that I want to say this shirt is very highly in demand. There's a lot of people who would like to have one, so if there's any way that we can make that available, they're willing to purchase it themselves, but they just really love it and would like to represent what this stands for.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Page. We'll see what we can do about that. All right. For his last board report, Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
As much as I will not like to pass up an opportunity to talk on a microphone, I've given you all my report earlier, so that's it. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Pearson. Drop the mic, Mike. Okay. And Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, your final report.
Good evening, President Water, and N V U S D Board Trustees, Dr. Mercedes, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath, and the N V U S D community. I will keep my remarks brief. As later this evening, you will hear a presentation on the Local Control Accountability Plan as part of our LCAP public hearing. I just want to announce the two grants that we recently have received. One is a $3.6 million Golden State Pathway Grant that will support our career technical ed programs. And then we also received a $183,000 grant to support newcomer services as well as middle school student access to mental health services. So, I want to just acknowledge both of those because those are truly due to the hard work of the instructional team in bringing in dollars to support critical programming. So, thank you to both Director Ready, Director Dr. Ready, and Director Knox for working on those two as well. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Andrew Jennings. And next and last, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangualo, who oversees the Business Services Division.
I will provide a comprehensive report about the budget later tonight, so I will not be providing a report now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mangualo. President Water, that concludes staff reports this evening.
President Water, before we move on, I would like to motion that we extend our meeting till 2:00, as we're rapidly approaching the 10:30 mark.
All right. Do I have a motion to extend our meeting until 2:00?
I move that we do that.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, one in opposition. Anyone abstaining? Well, it does pass, so here we go. Okay. Approval of consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of item is requested by a board member. I'm going to ask for public comment right now. Are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we need a roll call vote.
Yeah, no, wait a minute. I would like to pull item I 5D and then move to approve the remainder.
So, we have a motion to, well, we're going to pull an item, but we have a motion to approve and we have a second. So, roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Schuh?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Gracia?
Yes. Item I 5D, renewal of agreement with Tasty Pizza. The agenda item says an updated pricing list is reflected for per item costs for the upcoming school year. I was concerned that we had just last month approved this contract with a price list, and I didn't understand why would we be changing the price now just 30 days later. I then went and looked at the previous agenda item and compared it to this agenda item, and the prices are the same. So, I'm curious why it says there is an updated price list.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. I appreciated your inquiry that was submitted prior to the board meeting. I spoke with Director Kristen Teakell today, and the agenda description, the agenda item description was modified this afternoon. Director Teakell did inform me that the change, the only change to this contract from the last one that was approved was the term. The Tasty Pizza contract that was approved at the previous meeting was for the current year with current pricing. And the contract that's on the consent agenda this evening is again with Tasty Pizza. It is for the '24-'25 school year, and she recognized that Tasty Pizza has maintained status quo pricing. So, there is actually no updated pricing list because Tasty Pizza has agreed to provide the same pricing that they did in '23-'24 and '24-'25 as well. So, that's the clarification on that item.
Thank you. I will now move to approve that item.
Second. Second. Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Gracia and a second from Trustee Hart.
So, we need a voice vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Schuh?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to J, presentation and discussion items. We already did J 1A, Phillip's Elementary School. So, now we're at J 2A, Business Services, Public Hearing, '24-'25 Budget and Presentation.
I was hoping I could say good morning instead of good evening, so we didn't quite go long enough. I was trying to set a new record, but, and David did take my suggestion of 2:00. So, again, thank you very much. So, again, good evening. Thank for the opportunity to update the board and the community about our '23-'24 budget, or I should say '24-'25 budget. School districts adopt their budget in June and over two meetings. A budget hearing and a presentation will occur at this meeting tonight, with the adoption occurring at the second meeting. So, the budgets adopted by school districts are always based on the most recent information available. Since the actual state budget doesn't occur until later this year, the information school districts receive can be very vague and opaque, and it will definitely change. The most important component of a state budget are revenues, and again, the revenue outlook is very uncertain right now. And so typically what happens is we will use very conservative assumptions, and then when we get to first interim in the fall is really when you get a really good idea of what your true budget is like. Next slide, please. And so as background about our economic conditions, we went through a period of tremendous revenue growth at this state level due to our tax system that is highly dependent on stock market, strong stock market performance. The state used abnormally high revenues assumptions and then built permanent programs that they just don't want to cut. And so as a result, the state finds himself in a position where, you know, expenses exceed revenues and adjustments need to occur. The state is trying to do a good job of avoiding significant pain, but pain will happen at the state level over the next three years. Fortunately, it's not this coming year, but over the next couple of years, you will see the state have to adjust their budget absent very significant stock market returns and revenues that follow. Next slide. So, the labor market. So, at the national level, the labor market is still very strong with relatively low unemployment in terms of a historic average. But California typically, they have one of the lower unemployment rates, but what we see going on right now is we have an unemployment rate that's very high in California, but from a historic perspective, it's not, but in compared to the nation, it's the highest in the nation. And so, that does make you kind of question, why is that happening? Is it due to policies in California? Is it due to the overdependence on the technology sector? We could probably spend hours debating what the cause of that is, but the result is that we have less revenues under Prop 98. Next slide. And so inflation continues to be an issue, and I'll be, I'll talk about this a little bit further. So, inflation, there's another term for it, which is the more dangerous cousin that we call stagflation, which I'll talk about. And so, what this slide shows is that, you know, by all measures, inflation is still coming at much higher than what the Federal Reserve likes. And so 2% is always their target. When it's not at 2%, they raise interest rates. They've gone through a series of interest rate increases, but inflation's still kind of sticking around. And so it's sitting at 3.4%. The Federal Reserve is expected to lower interest rates potentially in September, but I am not really sure if that'll happen or not. We'll just have to wait. And again, they're like, because inflation is too high, the Federal Reserve might just wait for a good old fashioned bank failure or something like that to trigger a drop in interest rates. So, sometimes for them to really like double down on, you know, lowering interest rates, something bad needs to happen in the economy typically. And so if you look, it sounds silly, but historically, that's kind of what's happened is sometimes the Federal Reserve is kind of late to the game, but they don't have a lot of movement right now just because inflation is still so high and so it ends becoming very sticky. Next slide, please. And so what is stagflation? So, the economic conditions from the 1970s are just forever marked with the term stagflation. And stagflation is really just inflation that sticks around and everything in the economy is just moving in the wrong direction. So, inflation continues to go up, unemployment starts to creep up, right? But economic growth starts to go down. It's very difficult to fix, and sometimes it takes a long time. And again, it takes economic pain for that to happen. Next slide. And so what causes inflation? So, it typically, it starts with something, I mean, if we go through this slide right here, these are things that all happen. It starts with typically rising oil prices. So, why rising oil prices? So, oil is very important in our economy, which is used in almost everything. And so if you couple that with high government spending, and so that's not pointing really fingers at either party, both parties spent a lot during the pandemic. We kind of know the reasons why. But even coming out of the pandemic, some of the things that happened, there was continued kind of big government spending. It makes it really hard for the Federal Reserve to raise interest rates high enough to slow down the economy if you have large government spending programs in the background. It almost becomes impossible to kind of slow down the economy. But what you have in the background is you don't necessarily have true growth. And so when you have growth with inflation that exceeds growth, it's not really growth. It's just everything is more expensive. Another thing that can cause it, too, is when interest rates are just too low for too long. And so we did see a long period of really low interest rates. So, it's a combination of factors that cause stagflation. Next slide. So, what happens in response? And so we've seen most of these things kind of start to happen, and so the Federal Reserve definitely did their part, and they started raising interest rates. Money became more expensive. We all see that in big, big ticket items against when it's time to buy a new car. Most consumers have to borrow money for that. What happens is your payments go up, people stop buying cars, and what's supposed to happen is the economy should start to slow down, but it's just not really happening at the rate that everyone wants it to because we still have lots of spending going on on the government side. So, but what eventually happens is you see some pretty big layoffs. California, we see that kind of reflected in our unemployment rate, which is highest in the nation. We see a lot of that in the technology sector, which is reflected, too, in the revenues that we have under Prop 98. Eventually, what should happen is you should see businesses cut the costs of their goods and services or at least just stop increasing them. So, you see that in the auto sector. So, again, if you look at Tesla, for example, what Elon Musk do is the minute the sales started to drop, he really ratcheted down the prices of electric vehicles. And so you see that in other sectors, too, but it's just not enough to really bring inflation down. Next slide. And so when you look at fiscal conditions and our budget outlook, in particular, the stock market has an overly large impact on revenues in California. The stock market rose to unprecedented levels in 2021, and revenues went up by an outlandish 55%. And so there was tremendous growth of programs as a result. But then we know what happened after that. What happened after that is there was a big stock market drop, and the loss that was carried forward was at 62%. And so the capital loss is the opposite of a capital gain. What does that mean? That means less revenues at the state level. And then the loss is actually greater than the Great Recession to put in perspective. And so that's part of the reason why we're seeing so many problems under Prop 98. Next slide. So, another problem we have with the overall budget is the revenue spike from '21-'22 was assumed to be the new normal in terms of the revenue. We've spoken a lot about what the trend of revenue, the revenue line, and how we had a couple of years where the trend was exceptionally high. That number was carried forward, and a lot of programs were built around that, and it's going, it will definitely cause some pain. And so what's, again, we'll use the term unique. What's unique about what's happening right now is that we have this problem with revenues, but we're not in a recession. Normally, you have problems in revenues when there's a recession, but there's not a problem with that right now. Next slide. So, the state can't afford all the programs that were built up. Prop 98 requires school districts to receive 40% of the overall budget, but they can't afford to pay us. And so Gavin Newsom did come up with some creative ways to possibly solve this issue. They were likely illegal. Very recently, they did come up with a proposal which will kind of help solve the problem. It doesn't solve it 100%. Schools still aren't getting the full 40%, but what they did is they did a negotiated disruption of Prop 98 or a suspension of Prop 98. Next slide. And so the problem, again, there's a misalignment between revenues. It created an enormous problem for education budgets, not just for this year, but for multiple years out. We're being funded at the full amount, but the issue is that going out in the out years, it does create problems at the state level. Multi-billion dollar deficits to where, you know, the governor's budget, they did talk a lot about how they built up this large reserve under Prop 98. When they built up that large reserve under Prop 98, it lasted exactly one year. They're having to spend it all down this coming year just to balance their budget. And I do want to remind the board that that reserve that they talk about, they're not doing that to help school districts. They're not going around saying, hey, school district, you're having a hard time, let us give you some of that money. They're using that to solve their own problem. And so it's just a reminder that school districts need to worry about their own budget. They need to worry about creating their own reserve. And so when someone says, you don't really need a reserve because you've got that Prop 98 reserve, this just goes to show that that's just not true. The Prop 98 reserve helps the state problem, doesn't help us. Next slide. And so this slide shows the revisionist history is what I like to call it in terms of revenue. The extension of the tax deadline caused a problem where in terms of forecasting, they overforecast what revenues actually look like. And so what happened is everyone was given more money than they were supposed to technically. And so it creates this problem because Prop 98 doesn't allow you to go back and kind of fix that. And so the overprojection is about $8.8 billion. And again, this has never happened in the past, pretty large, pretty significant. Next slide. And so what's, the maneuver essentially has resulted in people having to go back and say, well, I know we gave you too much money, let's adjustment, adjust it. Originally, the proposal was to take that $8.8 billion and just consider it revenue under K-12, but not under Prop 98. And so what that would do, it wouldn't have created a problem in this year's revenue, but it would have created a problem in the out years as we kind of move away towards test one and potentially a test two or test three year where they kind of look back at the previous years for the base. Again, thankfully, at the last minute, this was changed. Go ahead. Next slide. This shows what the impact would have been had that maneuver have gone forward, and you can just see pretty significant loss. And you can just see pretty significant loss in the out years of, of between 12 and $14 billion. Thankfully, the maneuver was adjusted. It won't be that large, but there still will be an impact. Next slide. And so this is one of those things where, again, we get information after we already literally finished our presentation. So as a school district, we need to get our budget done early. We, obviously, I need to load this up. Literally, we, Jenner and I finished the budget, this information came out the next day, so I had to kind of go back and readjust my slides a little bit. And so this is my kind of hot off the press slide. And so what did they do as a, as a part of negotiation? They did a negotiated suspension of Prop 98 and they did what they're supposed to do, meaning instead of just reclassifying the money and not giving us any of it, they, they created an IOU for $5.5 billion. So not all the 8 million, but most of it. So essentially what that means in future years, they will need to pay, pay us back. And so the good thing is it will limit the number of programs that the state will be able to add and because they'll have to give us that, because CTA in the background will say, hey, before you add programs for X, you need to pay us back the money you owe us, right? And so again, we'll continue to see what that looks like in the out years. We could have COLAs that, that aren't fully funded. There are different things that they can do. We'll likely have some deferrals. This coming year, the deferrals that we're seeing, they're just kind of inter-year deferrals where you move payments one day or two days or three days, where it's not really an impact for us. But we know as the thing, as things get better, we'll, we'll likely have some real cash deferrals where we really need to lean into our reserves. Next slide. So declining enrollment, you've seen this slide before. It's just a reminder that it's, it's just not going anywhere. We continue to have significant declining enrollment in Napa and at the state level, especially in Napa County. Next slide. What are our local conditions? Next slide. So our local conditions, again, when we look at declining enrollment, very significant. So you'll notice here in the Napa area, we're projecting that we'll, we'll reduce our enrollment by 1,446 students over five years. So very significant declining enrollment. American Canyon, while does not show a decline over that period, this includes all the inter-district transfers we get and keeping it at the same rate. So if absent inter-district transfers, American Canyon would also have declining enrollment. One of the things that we are noticing too here, and I, I would say that the numbers here are actually too high for American Canyon. So Rob Murray did adjust our enrollment projections based on building that was happening in American Canyon, but it's actually coming in much, much slower than even he anticipated, much slower. So we, we had originally, for example, adjusted some of our American Canyon elementary schools significantly higher, but they're just, the students have not shown up yet. So it's either they're not generating students or the building's happening slower. So one of the big questions that Rob Murray has is for the student generation rate in American Canyon, he has historically used a rate that's almost three times the statewide average. The statewide average is, is about 0.3, meaning for, you get 10 houses, you get three students, that type of thing. And so for American Canyon, it's almost one for one. He's been using about 0.8 or 0.9. So 10 houses, nine students type of thing. And so we don't, we don't know, because there hasn't been any building in a while, whether that's the right factor to use or not. So we'll just have to wait and see. I did, I did make a bet with him, so hopefully I'll win, because I like to be right. And, but I, I'm projecting that it'll be lower than what it historically has been because the houses they were building in the past were bigger. There were bigger multifamily homes, which had multi-generational homes. The new homes that you see being built right now, they're 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. They are relatively inexpensive for the Bay Area, which is a positive. And I know a lot of them have, are, they're subsidized, you're paying a lower interest rate than you would get in the market, but they're smaller homes and they have a very relatively small backyard. Next slide. So this slide depicts an issue where we have an ADA decline that's, that's lower than our enrollment. We've spoken about this, but I, you know, I'll probably continue to mention it over the next series of meetings about budget. It's just a reminder that in the current year and the next year, our drop in actual funding, funded ADA is actually more severe than our drop in enrollment. So again, any district that has severe declining enrollment, like Napa does, will experience the same thing. So it's, it's not unique to us. It's, it's something that everyone will have to deal with. And so when you look at the slide, 23, 24 is a bad year, but 24, 25 is worse. Next slide. Yeah, I know, right? And then, so what do we know for key proposals? So they're very limited information, other than the COLA is about 1.07%. There'll be ongoing funding for Prop 90, for Prop 28, funding for the arts with three years to spend. They'll be funded for expanded learning opportunity program. One of the challenges that we have there is we're not really sure the exact amount we'll get for next year. We are, not all districts ramped up a program so fast. We do have a very significant after-school program. Funding for districts that have an unduplicated account above 75% is outlined in statute where they get a specific dollar amount. Districts who have an unduplicated account like us, that are sitting around 65% or less than 75, I should say, we just get what's left over. So we're not completely certain what that looks like. The other thing that we have is we do anticipate continued funding for universal meals. Next slide. So this is our budget summary. So you can see that we do have a balanced budget for 24, 25. It was definitely more challenging than in previous years. We have less wiggle room. We are anticipating a structural deficit for year two and year three. And so what we will need to do is we will need to continue to adjust the level of our employees, hopefully through natural attrition, to just continue to reduce that deficit. And again, as we go to, you know, adopt our budget, budget for the next fiscal year, we'll just have to watch and see how close we are. We could get to a point to where it's difficult to adopt a budget without some form of, of a structural deficit. Next slide, please. And so again, one of our assumptions, or our revenue assumptions, use the LCFF calculator, which does have all the assumptions that are known at this point in time in term, from the, from the governor. Again, when we, we get to first interim, we'll have a new LCFF calculator that will have the most recent assumptions in there. It assumes a funded COLA of 1.07%, 2.93% and 3.08%. Step in column equal to 2%. Continued declining enrollment with ADA decreases greater than decline and funding per side for NBUSD's compensation formula. Next slide. So what are our recommendations? So we recommend approval of a positive certification for our budget. Approve committing the reserve. And so the committing of the reserve will happen at the next, at the next meeting. It doesn't happen at this meeting. Our budget will again, need to be adjusted at first interim based on the data we get from the state. We received less guidance than normal, so I wouldn't say that we're flying in the dark. We do have the LCFF calculator, but a lot of the decisions just haven't been made until actually the state actually adopts a budget. Well, again, we'll need to continue to adjust our staffing sizes and hopefully it will match natural attrition. Next slide. I think that's it. And I don't have a slide for questions, but I'll just open it up to questions or comments.
Okay. Well, before we do questions, let's go to public comment. Do we have any public comments from people online, Mr. Michaels?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Well, Trustee Gracia?
Yes. Thank you. We have been approaching budget adoption for some time now, and the numbers have always been grim. It doesn't help that the governor continues to use magic numbers that have little bearing on reality in order to make it easier for him to arrive at a balanced budget. Despite the continued grim outlook, the work of Mr. Manguala and his team is to be lauded as he has managed to get us to budget adoption without deficit spending in the current year. While the cushion is quite slight, I'm hopeful that the cushion will be preserved even in the face of the uncertain budget realities that are still being decided in Sacramento. Budget adoption is something of a maddening process as attempting to figure out an appropriate budget when we don't even know the numbers that we will be working with is difficult, to say the least. Things with the budget are happening quickly as the deadline to approve the budget is fast approaching. It was only a couple of days ago that the governor announced the cancellation of the maneuver and the desire to suspend Prop 98. It is too early to tell exactly what might be in store for us when the state finally adopts the budget next week, as no concrete details have been put forward around the education compromise. Focusing more on our own budget, it is of grave concern seeing those large budget deficits in our projected years two and three, particularly year three, as we do not maintain an adequate reserve to keep the district above the board required 10% reserve level. Mr. Manguala, you and your team are to be lauded for your hard work in this very difficult budget timeframe, but you have a lot of hard work still to do in light of these extremely troubling numbers in the out years. I urge you to prevent those out years from becoming reality, even in these turbulent and uneven budget times.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia.
Luckily, I'm just going to take out the majority of the paragraphs I've written due to time. And honestly, Trustee Gracia hit most of it. Anytime the governor's budget is consistently referenced as a complex accounting maneuver, we have a problem. Maneuver as a verb is to carefully guide, or in this case manipulate, in order to achieve, achieve an end, and the term maneuver was properly used here. Skip four paragraphs. And so my comments regarding NBUSD should just be set on repeat every budget cycle. The business office has always made hard decisions with the least amount of impact to the system to deliver a present year balanced budget. It is challenging and will continue to be so. Prop 98 is a guarantee, apparently until it isn't. School finance has a lot of hidden complexities and our business office has made the difficult decisions that allow us to navigate budgetary hurdles with the least amount of ramifications. There are an abundance of external factors that influence the budget process and the work that goes into navigating those factors when putting forth a balanced budget is a reflection of their responsiveness to each challenge in the context of the district as a whole. We can't deficit spend. I agree, we have a lot of work to do, and I am completely confident we will do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
I just want to add that no matter how many times we hear that part of the budget that, not until the fall, when we're fully starting going, will we have a much closer look to what it actually is going to be? It's just, just again, a reminder to whoever's listening to us at 10:43 PM of just how difficult it is to put somewhat of a budget with your, with the conservative numbers, which that's what we can go with. It just, to me, it just continues to just mind boggle me in the sense of how do you even do that, right? So just thank you. I guess that's my way of saying thank you for making possible with somewhat of the impossibility, impossibility of the information, especially from this budget year, from this governor, which is pretty insane. Even in my world, it's insane. The uncertainty has given me a new perspective and just mad respect for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Trustee, too.
Thank you for all the work that you and your staff are doing to make sure that we are fiscally responsive to what we're given, basically. And I completely agree with you that I think we may be overestimating American Canyon's growth, mainly because I'm in a neighborhood with large homes that are normally housing multiple generations or, you know, multiple families. And when their kids leave our school system, they still stay because they can't really still afford even the lower price homes that are being built. And that's not limited to just American Canyon, but you see this across the, the United States. There was a New York Times article about it recently. So I don't, I, I, I think your projections are probably right. I hope you win your, well, I don't necessarily, I hope you win your bet against Rob, the other Rob. But, but, you know, that, that's our reality. And so I'm glad you are thinking about it and that we are trying to be responsive to all of that. Thank you.
Trustee. Riser.
Just quickly, thank you for the presentation. The, the phrase that came to mind as you were speaking was this is like juggling blindfolded. Like I don't know how you stay so calm and, and pull off the, the fiscal stability that you continue to steward for us in the organization. And I just wanted to call out, you know, you, you called out how this instability in funding is going to make it all the more important for us to, to safeguard our own reserves because we will need to lean into those. So I share the concern that Trustee Gracia voiced and, and Trustee Jankowicz as well about, you know, the not, not hitting the mark in year three of our board policy of the 10% reserve requirement. So, but I have the utmost confidence in you and your team to, to manage and wrangle the numbers as they continue to shift and change and to keep the negative impacts and cuts as far from the classroom as they can possibly be. And thank you for continuing to navigate this on behalf of our organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Well, I just have one very short one and then I'll close the public hearing and we'll take a break. But anytime you hear the words vague, opaque, changeable, applied to our budget.
Applied to accounting, right? Applied to accounting.
Our budget, you know, to, it's, it's, you know, the, it's just a little bit alarming. But as my colleagues have said, I have confidence in you. We've been through some very hard times together and we're kind of used to it. And this is the state of California. There's a, normally I appreciate the governor's optimistic outlook, but, you know, we do have to face reality. And as you said, there's, there's, there's a, there's a history behind what's going on here. There's a reason old people, older people are aging in place and it's not just high interest rates, it's, you know, Proposition 13. So that's why, you know, young people are not living in those houses and going to our schools. But thank you very much for your report. We have confidence in you and your department. Thank you very much. And I'm going to close the public hearing. And let's take a short break. We are back. Okay. Next is a public hearing on Local Control and Accountability Plan, otherwise known as LCAP, and LCAP Federal Addendum Presentation. Take it away.
Thank you, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti and the NBUSD community. I'm excited to have Student Board Representative McGrath and Alternative Representative Mr. Bencola presenting alongside me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present this year's Local Control and Accountability Plan, otherwise known as the LCAP, to the board and the NBUSD community. This presentation and public hearing allows members of the NBUSD community to give feedback on our plans for using supplemental funds to support our unduplicated student progress, students' progress. The purpose of, of this evening is to provide a progress update on our 2021 to 2024 LCAP. LCAPs run in three-year cycles, so we are closing out the three years of, of the, of our current LCAP and then starting a new one. I'll provide an overview of the feedback we received from our educational partners through our LCAP engagement process and then share the new proposed LCAP for the next three-year cycle. And then this is also part of the public hearing to receive input on the proposed LCAP from community members as well. Just a reminder of some LCAP basics, as we know that we receive supplemental and concentration dollars based on our percent of unduplicated students that we have enrolled, unduplicated students, our students who are English learners or what we call, what we now call multilingual learners, students who qualify for the federal free and reduced mill program, and our foster and temporarily unhoused students as well. Our unduplicated pupil count is up to 63% of our student population approximately, and then we are receiving approximately $34 million in supplemental and concentration funds, Just a little quick overview of our LCAP development timeline. We start in January, January through March, looking at achievement and attendance data. It also begins our process of community engagement. This year was slightly different because we also had our NBUSD strategic visioning process going, going along as well. So we used input from our strategic visioning process as well as our typical traditional LCAP engagement processes to collect information from our educational partners. During During April and May is when we're drafting the annual update, and as well as the new LCAP. We have our District English Learner Advisory Committee take a look at it. We give them our data, get feedback from them, as well as our District Advisory Committee, which is made up of parents from our schools that have received Title I dollars, and any other parent advisory group. And here we are today, June 6th, for our public hearing, and then the LCAP will come back to the board on June 20th. So just a little bit about the annual update. So this is more than just an annual update, it's actually a look at the three years of our current LCAP. And what I've done is the slide, this table is divided into two parts. One is just a highlight of the data points, the metrics that we use for this particular goal, areas that were bright spots. And then the far column on the right are areas that need attention. You can't really read it across, it really should just be read down. So as you can see, in terms of our STAR ELA proficiency, we rose from three years ago from 42% to 47.4%. However, if you look at our, in terms of an area needing attention, there was a drop in math proficiency on STAR and CASP across the system. Some grade levels had bright spots. You'll hear more from Director Abud in the next board meeting about our most recent STAR data, but you'll see that there's growth some places, not others, and so we continue to dig in and look at that. In terms of career readiness indicators, you can see some pretty good increases. Our number of students who completed CTE pathways grew from 246 to 347, so over 100 more students completed CTE pathways. Those are typically two-year pathways, and so we had an increase in that. Also, the number of students who completed the A to G requirements and a CTE pathway rose from 3.9 to 23%. So that's a pretty significant increase. And just the number of students enrolled in CTE courses has increased from 1,100 to 1,500, over 1,500 students. So some real areas of growth around career readiness, however, goes back to looking at our CASP data and just minimal ELA growth on CASP. So there's not, it's just been somewhat flat. Again, some variance between grade levels. And then our college readiness indicators, if you recall, like, that is a particular measure on the California State Dashboard, and you can see that, well, one of the measures that they look at is AP pass rates, and we had an increase in students who are passing the AP test with a score of three or higher. And that does show that there's some level, the level of rigor that students are experiencing, and more students are passing the AP, and they go, well, what? Well, are more students taking AP classes? And the answer to that is yes. So it's not just that there's more kids passing, but there are also more kids taking AP exams. And then an area needing attention, just our overall A to G completion rate, and it's not just the A to G, whether students meet A to G, but when you disaggregate the data, we still have disparities in student groups in terms of who's meeting the A to G rates in different student groups, whether it's our African-American students, or our multilingual learners, or our students who are socially, economically disadvantaged. So that's all on Goal One, which is around students graduating college and career-ready. That goal is specifically looking at academic achievement. We have Goal Two, which is students will experience responsive and engaging learning. And then this particular goal is focused on our multilingual learners. The metrics we use on this goal are around our multilingual learners. And you can see an increase in our reclassification rate from 7.7 to 11.9. And then also LPAC progress, the number of students who are making at least one levels growth on the LPAC, also increased, but just very slightly. And then you can see the areas needing attention. We want to continue to increase our reclassification rate and get it up there closer to 20%. And the same thing with our LPAC progress rate, we'd love to have that well over 50%. And then Goal Three, which is around our family engagement and advocacy, and we use the annual parent survey for this information, and you'll see that we have continued to increase in the areas that we are measuring around whether or not families or parents know what to expect of their child. That is one area that we probably could use some attention to in making sure that parents know what grade level standards their child needs to learn in those grade levels, because there's just a minimal increase, well, 4%, 78 to 82. The "I feel welcome at my child's school," 75% to 89%. It's a pretty substantial increase in terms of how students, how parents, families feel welcome at their child's school, goes back to the idea of a culture of belonging and welcoming and inclusion that is really telling. And then that they feel that language is not a barrier to their child's participation in school, significant improvement in that area. And the same thing with received communication and language, I understand, significant improvement. And I think it's a real testament to the systems that have been put in place around interpretation and translation, so that school sites, much easier for them to get access to a translator or to interpret documents than it has been in the past. We have some really good systems, and that's a tribute to the work that Director Manning and Director Ready have done with ELAC in making sure that they have the resources that they need. And the goal is really just to maintain the progress. We want to keep that, that metric high. And then Goal Four, students will thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. This goal addresses the whole child. We're looking at, the metrics that we use in this one are really around attendance and behavior, things like that. We also look at the California Healthy Kids Survey. So one of the big gains you'll see, and you'll hear more from Director Christopherson at the meeting on June 20th, is around chronic absenteeism. And you can see from a high of 28.2 to 16.6 is pretty substantial, especially when you think about all the funds that go along with that. And then in the California Healthy Kids Survey, if you recall, from last year to this year, there was every other, because it, surveys fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th, and we saw that fifth grade and 11th, ninth and 11th had returned almost to pre-pandemic levels, everything except seventh grade. And we're finally closer to pre-pandemic levels for seventh grade at middle school. So I think some of the transition that happened with the middle school redesign, things have settled in, students are feeling that sense of belonging. There are two questions we look at, and one is school connectedness. Do they have a caring adult that they, you know, at school? And then, and that showed that an increase. So we're, that looks really positive. And then our attendance rate has gone from 90.8 to 93.29. That's a pretty substantial, and we want to get back to our pre-pandemic level of 96.4. So, and we just want to maintain the progress on chronic absenteeism, get it back to pre-pandemic levels, which was really around eight or nine percent, and then increase improvements, just continue to increase the improvements made in student connectedness. And then our last goal that we had in our current LCAP is around our temporarily unhoused students. We added this goal because this particular student group was performing not at optimal levels. And so you can see that some of the highlights are that the graduation rate increased, the chronic absenteeism substantially increased, and the suspension rate was, been greatly reduced. And that, one of the strategies that we had is that we do have a social worker who supports our families who are temporarily unhoused, and they continue to work on systems to connect students as they enroll in our system to the resources that we have available at our school site. So I think that's made a big difference. And then areas that still need attention, CASP proficiency, ELA math for this particular student group, and then we want to just continue to reduce the chronic absenteeism because 32.8 is still really high, and then just maintain progress on the suspension rate. And with that, let's shift a bit, that's sort of like an overview of the metrics. And this presentation is really an overview, a summary of all the information that's in the 80-plus pages of the LCAP. And so if there's more information that people want to gather, they can always take a look at the document. So I wanted to talk, we talked a little bit about the educator, the educational partner engagement, and how this year, because of NVUSD's strategic visioning work, where we engaged with quite a few community members through surveys, through the Guiding Coalition meetings, that we were able to use some of that information in our planning for this year's LCAP. We also did our traditional family survey that measures those items that we talked about earlier, and we did have a lower response rate, but I know we surveyed a lot this year with the strategic visioning work. So I think that that's some reasoning why the survey results, there's less, we did quite a few surveys, but this survey was specifically on our LCAP process. And then you can see that the, breaking the survey down in terms of demographics, it's very close to our student demographics. So I feel like it's pretty representative in terms of the information received of our student demographics. Some of the areas that our families or parents identified is student safety and discipline concerns. That seems to always, that's one of the things that comes up. As much work as we've done in those two areas, that seems to be something that comes up. One of the things that's come up, and it's come up in the boardroom as well as on the survey, was responsible use of digital devices with and by students. And so that showed up in the survey in the comment section, quite a bit about that, as well as you guys have heard presentations or a public comment at the board meetings. Parents really wanting to make sure that vocational and college learning opportunities were available for students, even from a younger age. We heard that in the Guiding Coalition information, as well as it came through in our parent survey, our family survey. Support for advanced learners, again, making sure that we're challenging all of our students. And communication and engagement, we always get this mixed survey, like our comment section, too much communication, not enough communication, can you do something other than parents care? Like, so we get that feedback, and I just wanted to make sure to document that that's some of the feedback we received around communication, and just trying to figure out a way to make sure that parents are getting the information that they need, or families are getting the information that they need. Continued, brought up around the need for diverse curriculum, cultural representation, making sure that students are able to see themselves in the curriculum, we are, you know, continuing to work on that. And then support for students with special needs, just however, how we go about doing that. And you'll see on the next slide, specifically from our District English Learner Advisory Committee, you heard when they did their presentation last week, how they talked, I mean, the things that are here are the things that they talked about, wanting more parent education, leadership opportunities. They've had several opportunities over this last year for different, to learn about how ELAC works, how do, I mean, and they want more, and I think that's great, and it's a true testament to their sense of agency, especially as you watch their presentation and how much ownership they took over it. And we want to continue to offer that academic for students during the school day, as much as we offer after school. They want to see, how can we offer it during the school day? And we continue to figure out creative ways to try to do that. Increased opportunities for student electives, that comes up because as students are required to take English language development, then that's, especially in middle school and high school, then that's one elective that they don't get to have. So how do we do that? And we have a, there's one creative solution that's being piloted at Napa High next year to see if we can still do that. And then training for site administrators on ELAC, you heard that from the parents last month, and then they really want, it came through, reclassifications, some kind of reclassification celebration, and I'm all for a good, a good party, so. And then from our Sped Parent Advisory, continuing support for inclusion and beyond inclusion belonging, and then increased communication at secondary. You know, as kids go into middle school and high school, our families who have students with special needs don't feel the same level of communication, especially with their gen ed teachers. They might talk to their case manager a lot, but not with the gen ed teachers, and they want more training for general education teachers on supporting students with special needs. And then we also got input from our staff through several surveys, intervention support for students, you know, they're seeing the full breadth of students that are coming to their classes and the skill level, so wanting intervention support. They talked about the staff workload and professional development, like, that comes up, that more behavioral supports for students, the impact of increasing district initiatives, just, you know, all the things that we have asked of them, and they've stepped up and done, it's just it does have the impact, and how can we help to sort of mitigate that a bit? More student-based, school-based support, like, what can we do at the site level to provide more support? And then increased work-based learning, especially in the trades. We got, we heard that really clearly from our CSSE, members or reps that really wanting to see how can we get students more involved in the trades? And then teaching life schools, interviewing, finance, things like that. And then our last, most critical group is our students, and we do have a wonderful Student Advisory Council, and we have two student reps, Finn and Mestura, who are going to share a little bit about the Student Advisory Council work that they did, and I'm going to pass it to them.
All right. Okay. Hello, everyone. We are just going to talk about our experience on the LCAP Student Advisory Council. We've both been on it this year and past year, and personally, it's been a great experience to hear the voices of all the students, and we'll go more in depth into that on the next So first off, the Student Advisory Group is made up of student representatives from all five high schools and four of the middle schools, and these are students who are able to voice the opinions of their campuses. And while this is a Student Advisory Council, we also collaborated with school site administrators who sat in on a lot of the meetings and listened to the opinions of the students.
And this unique group allowed, you know, students from across the five high schools and four middle schools to collaborate together and also take, you know, the information that is being provided during our LCAP sessions, our advisory sessions, back to their school sites to host focus groups, to help, you know, inform the feedback and decision-making. And we met once a month since the fall, and again, we've conducted multiple focus groups back at our school sites, so we've been pretty busy. So first, this is kind of, you know, what we narrowed it down to, is what we want to focus on this year, right? So then we have future visioning, eighth to ninth grade transition and developing relationships. So last year, we had a long list to work from of, you know, items populated by last year's advisory group and focus groups that we, again, hosted last year on what we thought, you know, needed the most attention or urgent, you know, attention and things needed to be done. And then we narrowed it down to three, and then this year, we mainly focused our energy on producing something, kind of having a model to work with that kind of answers this like question around, you know, future visioning, which is kind of centered around the desire to be able to provide high schoolers with the tools to be able to articulate the kind of future they want, right? Whether that be in a trade, or college, or the military, we wanted, you know, high school to be able to say, this is what I want to do. And the reason that kind of came up, or that became a priority is because, you know, but based on the research that the students went back to do with their respective high schools, we found that a lot of students didn't know what exactly it was that they wanted after high school, and if they did, they didn't know exactly how to get there. So then that's how future visioning came to be.
And then our next identified area was eighth to ninth grade transition. So this stemmed from our younger students in our Student Advisory talking about how their ninth grade year, they had trouble acclimating to their high school. And so the purpose of identifying this as an area to address was to figure out how to prepare eighth graders academically and socially for high school. So academically, that is getting them ready for the coursework and the way the high school is structured in comparison to middle school. And socially, that is getting them involved in clubs, arts, and athletics in the summer before they start high school, so that when they start high school, they already have a group of students that they know and are comfortable with.
And then lastly, we have the developing relationships portion, and we kind of found that there was a discrepancy between students and teachers in that, and being able to see each other past that role. Does that make sense? So like, teachers were seeing students as tools, like, okay, you're just here to learn, and students were feeling as if teachers weren't being, teachers aren't able to connect with them. So then we found that this was another issue that needed to be, you know, addressed immediately because we want students to be able to feel as if the teachers do in fact care about them and be able to, you know, provide them the resources to be able to foster a relationship.
And one of our goals this year was to put things into action. Last year, as Mestura said earlier, we had created a long list of things that we wanted to address, and one of our goals this year was to actually put things into action so that we could do that instead of just talking about it in our group. And the first thing that we talked about to do this year, which we have done, is eighth grade advisory visits across all NVUSD middle schools. So basically- And the first thing that we talked about to do this year, which we have done, is eighth grade advisory visits across all NVUSD middle schools. So basically, the goal for this was to have high schoolers go down to middle school advisories to kind of bridge that gap that I had mentioned earlier between high school, high schoolers and middle schoolers. And we did a presentation on kind of just a general overview of what high school's like, and not specific to any school site, so that the middle schoolers would feel comfortable, more comfortable going into high school.
And I just wanted to add on that, I mean, just last week, I was at Silverado Middle School, and then American Canyon, we went to ACMES, and the response from the students, teachers, and the principals at that site, they were very appreciative that we were there, and kind of like, it was clear that's what the students were wanting. We had a student ask us, hey, did you have this when you were in eighth grade? And we were like, no, we didn't, but we're giving it to you so you can, you know, have something that we didn't have, and hopefully help, you know, have this tool that we know will be, will take you far. So then that's why it's on there, that like, you know, next, we started with this kind of on a small scale, but we're hoping to grow and kind of have more buy-in from all the school sites and kind of do this at a larger scale for the next school year. So then the two other kind of things that are in planning for the next school year or, you know, next advisory group would be a future fair, which is an opportunity for middle schoolers to go up to a high school or, in their, a high school in their area, and basically have, and you know how we have our virtual career days, but that in person with, you know, options across the field of what they can do? So from trades to, you know, nursing and all types of things, and to be able to allow middle schoolers to gain exposure at an early age, so they can already start, you know, picturing themselves somewhere, and obviously that's subject to change, but at least they can kind of have an idea of what's out there. And then next, we had elective shadow days, which is basically an opportunity, and American Canyon does something similar to this, but an opportunity for middle schoolers to come down to the high school and kind of pair up with a buddy that's in the same elective as them. So then band kits from the middle school will go to band kit, would have like a buddy that's in band from the high school, and they'll shadow them for two periods and basically then spend the rest of the day as kind of a big old group, and in middle school and high school, kind of working on different activities, if that makes sense? And obviously, that can change, but seeing that model at American Canyon High School and how much, you know, it brings the middle schoolers and high schoolers together, we found that that's something that all the school sites would benefit from.
And then lastly, is a student feedback system. So another thing that was addressed, which Mestera mentioned earlier, was the building relationships. So this kind of addresses that, and basically, the idea for a student feedback system was to have a way for students to provide feedback to their teachers anonymously, so that in the instances where they didn't feel comfortable talking to their teachers about certain things, they would be able to give them advice or feedback on whatever they wanted fixed, if they had, you know, a problem or something that they were concerned about with their teacher that they didn't feel addressing to them face-to-face, they could submit something anonymously, and then that would get to the teacher, and so that the teacher would get this feedback without the student feeling uncomfortable.
Yeah.
And thank you all for listening, and we hope that next year's advisory group continues our work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to absolutely thank Finn and Mestera for presenting, and, and they have been phenomenal. They have served as leaders, obviously, on the Student Advisory, and that it's being, they are prototyping things that we can then take to scale, and then we can put them in the LCAP to make sure that they come to fruition. And all of the ideas are student-generated and student-researched and based on needs that have come from students. And that's what we want to do, is be responsive to the needs of the students and making sure that we're providing them the support and the resources that they need. So thank you. I know they've gotten a lot of love tonight, but I.
Yes, they have.
And if they want to go home, they can go home.
Yeah, you guys should go home. We'll see, we'll see you at graduation.
Thank you. The last part of.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, it's your student trustee, Tamara.
The last part of this presentation is, is looking at the new goals for the upcoming year, and I will just want to, want to make this one note, that as the strategic plan is completed, comes to the board for approval, there will be a need to revisit the goals that are in this current LCAP, but because they didn't exactly align in terms of when things needed to be done, there will have to be, there will probably be the need to revise this, as well as adding additional metrics that are aligned with the, some of the new strategies that will be added in the strategic plan. So I just wanted to make that comment before we moved on. There are, but they have, there have been some revisions to our five goals. We still kept five goals. One is that just the change in language from students will graduate college and career-ready to just students who will graduate future-ready, it's a little broader and not specifically addressing just the college or career element, but all the things that came up during our strategic visioning. Goal two was changed to be more clear around the focus and the intent of what we were doing, that student learning will be responsive, relevant, and engaging, so making sure that that is really clear, so there was some slight change in language. Families, the goal three, four, and five are pretty much the same goals that we had, that those are things, they're very broad goals, that are what we hope to achieve in this coming LCAP. On this slide, you'll see that there are the four, there are four areas for goal one around students will graduate future-ready, and you'll see some of the sample or examples of actions and services that are listed for each of those. There are some things that have been changed. We, we continue to work on language and literacy support, that's going to be an ongoing effort in, when you think about the new strategic visioning, that what came out of that is really focused on early literacy and ensuring that teachers have the skills that they need to teach early literacy. And then math program support, ongoing effort around that. There have been some changes in the, the actions that are listed when you go into the full LCAP. And then the other change was that this third strategy, data-driven, is really ensuring, before we had comprehensive assessment system, but I think there's that switch, like, the purpose of a comprehensive assessment system is to use that data to drive instruction, to drive decision-making, and so there's a change in language for that particular one, to be more focused on, on what our intent is. And working on the training on highly effective data protocols for administrators and teachers to use to implement relevant and rigorous instruction. So that's going to be the focus, and then the actions aligned to that. And then the fourth strategy also changed, it was work-based learning, very narrow. It really is like career readiness programming, middle school, high school, and making sure that we have increased opportunities for students. And what Mestera and Finn just shared about the funding for a future fair event for secondary students, whether it's for the transportation, whether it's for hosting, whatever that might look like, the students started to design it, and they really were trying to get it done before the end of the school year, and we kind of had to like step back and say, okay, we have to think about what's realistic at this school year, but we wanted to pilot something. So it was great for them to have that opportunity to pilot advisory, to go visit the advisory classes, and I would love to be able to share, just send it to you, the, the presentation that they put together for students, and it really does respond to what the students shared last year, that they want high school to be more caring, less scary, right? More caring, less scary, and so that's, that was their effort. Yeah, high school should not be scary, but, you know. And then, goal two, student learning will be responsive, relevant, and engaging. We've added an additional strategy around intensive support for our long-term English learners. When we looked at the data, we noticed that our long-term English learner students were not making the progress, especially when you get to secondary, which is when most of them are identified as long-term English learners, and thinking about what supports we can put in place. And so we will have like additional multilingual learner support, FTE, at the middle and high school to provide and monitor student progress with our long-term English learners. So I think that's going to really help make a difference. And then ongoing support for our newcomer students and interim English language development all day, and then really continuing to provide professional learning so that our teachers have the knowledge and skills that they need. And then goal three, we kept at the same. We want to continue the work that we've been doing around parent and community engagement, and it has been effective, so we want to continue that work and maintain that progress. And then goal four, this is to address again, like, the whole child, so student wellness and support programs, making sure that we maintain what we have, and that's what our programming does. And then we also just, we want to strengthen our, our multi-tiered system of support, and making sure that it's working as effectively as possible at all of our school sites. There are some sites that are exemplary in terms of what they, how they approach that, and there are sites that need some additional support. And then the third strategy that's listed is belonging and inclusivity, and that changed, I think we had like DEI, just diversity, equity, inclusion, but we really wanted to focus on belonging and inclusivity. And then that's where the funding to support those transition activities from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth, and this also shows up in the strategic plan as well. Some elements of this around, one of the strategies around belonging and inclusivity. And then, of course, obviously, safe, clean, and secure school campuses. This allows us to provide additional campus supervisors funded out of supplemental dollars, as well as additional assistant principal positions funded out of supplemental dollars. And then lastly, we are maintaining this goal, which is to support students who are temporarily unhoused, who are McKinney-Vento eligible. We will continue to have a McKinney-Vento Foster Youth Coordinator to ensure that they have access to all the things that they need. And what's great about this person is they can provide not just the academic resources, but if they need other resources, whether it's support with some housing, or a backpack, or supplies, or extracurricular activities, we have the resources through our LCAP supplemental dollars to support that. And as I close out, so you will see that we have the public hearing right now. I will take whatever feedback I receive, whatever feedback I receive from public comment or whatever, and use that information to revise as needed, and then it will come back to the board for approval on June 20th with, with whatever changes have been noted. Okay? And that concludes the presentation.
Great. I'm going to ask about public comments right now, and then we'll move to discussion. Do we have, Mr. Michael, any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Good. I'm glad people are sensible and going to bed. All right. Trustee Gracia.
So I really appreciated the LCAP Student Advisory Group and the information that they provided in this process. That presentation was focused, comprehensive, and I appreciate that contribution. So thank you for including that. However, I am dissatisfied with our results on this LCAP report. It appears that we are not hitting the extremely modest academic standards that we have set for ourselves in this document, specifically in goals one and two. In contrast, goals three through five seem to have been fairly successful. We are at a key juncture at this time, as is the opportunity to adopt our next three-year plan. As such, I would like us to aim for excellence in our LCAP's desired outcomes, in the hopes that by aiming for excellence, we will raise the floor on student achievement higher than it currently is. Right now, it appears that aiming for mediocrity is only getting us more mediocrity. Let's keep our standards high, and shoot for the moon, and have faith that our students will rise to the occasion. We have practiced keeping our standards low and achievable for many years now. During my tenure on the board, the LCAP standards have been kept low and achievable, and I'm here to tell you, it isn't working. I have on numerous occasions suggested we aim higher with our goals, and each time, it has been resisted by the system. Now is the time to scrap Mr. Pearson's random ringtones, but also the plan for mediocrity and attempt something else entirely. Let's move forward with setting high goals and standards for ourselves and our students, and see if we can't reach, can't reach them instead of continuing to settle for mediocre goals that only produce mediocre results. High standards and goals will have a better impact on student achievement than these lower, more attainable goals have had. Let's shoot for the stars.
Anyone else?
I can respond.
Okay, you can respond, of course.
I, I can understand your point of view, Trustee Gracia. I know that every year, we sort of try to, try to strive a balance between aspirational, like, 100% of our students will, and there are some goals that are set at 100%, and there are some goals that are set at a more, like, as you mentioned, more, maybe more modest, realistic, but we try to strive for a balance between the aspirational and something that is achievable, and we continue to push that. And as you mentioned, we didn't hit the goals that we set, some of the goals that we set in our current LCAP, and I, I'm not sure that by setting higher goals that we would have reached them in, in that case.
Even if we hadn't reached the higher goals, we might have moved further along the path. We might have raised the floor, maybe even if we didn't hit the ceiling by setting a higher goal, right? You aim here, and you only get here, that's pretty good, whereas if you aim here and you only get here, that's still pretty bad. So my thought is, let's go high, set the high standard, and people will rise to meet the expectation. Do not set these low standards and then fail to meet them. Set the high standards, and if we fail to meet them, at least we will have gotten much closer.
Can I respond to that comment, just briefly? The LCAP as a document is defined that actually communicates our values. It's not necessarily a document that gives us, you know, specificity around those, those benchmarks. So part of the responsibility, I think, of the, and I understand that you, the need and want for betterment for our students. This document gives the community a broader understanding of kind of resource allocation, and it's a document to allow NVUSD to tell its story. And it's the document that kind of shows the how, the what, and the why that we do what we do. It's not a standard-setting, you know, it is, to Pat's comment, it, it is trying to set realistic standards, and it is in response to, it's like a template and a question. And so I don't think we are saying that we are not going to, we are not striving for, we don't want to be. I think it is a document that gives us a, a place to say, this is what we're doing to get to this next place, but I don't think we are setting low standards.
I think we definitely are, particularly in the current LCAP that we have just concluded. Those standards were very low. We had very modest goals, and we didn't hit them. I think if we aspire to greatness, then we will get much closer to greatness. If we aspire to mediocrity, we will continue to be mediocre.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to weigh in quickly here and, and say that I really disagree with the way that you're, that Trustee Gracia is framing your approach here to improving the instructional outcomes for the students of NVUSD. I don't at all find, I, I don't at all concur with his assessment that you are, you and your department are striving for mediocrity, and I actually find that kind of offensive and insulting to Dr. Andrew Jennings as a professional, and to her team, and to all of the hard work that they have put in all year, not only in, in their ongoing work to, to address the aftermath of the pandemic on student learning, but on continuing to strive to support all of our students in excellence. You know, education is messy, and students are humans, and it's not a, it's not like getting the crowd pumped up at a political rally, and everyone's like, yeah, yeah, now I'm going to go and get 100 on my test because, boy, was the mood high. It doesn't work that way, Trustee Gracia. Learning doesn't work that way, and you can put anything you want down on paper, but what matters is what's happening in our classrooms, K-12, TK-12 across the district, and that's what the LCAP addresses. So I want to thank you, Dr. Andrew Jennings, for your hard work, your authentic engagement with all of the stakeholders across the organization. I concur with, with Trustee Gracia on this one point, which is that the, it was so powerful to see the Student Advisory Council's work there, and, and so inspiring to, to witness their commitment to that role, and to see the, the enthusiasm and the energy and the amazing, smart, creative problem-solving that they bring to these issues. This presentation represents an enormous amount of, of a huge span of work across all aspects of our students' experience here. So I want to take it as such, as a, as a broad representation of where we are headed next, and I concur with the, with the goals that you have put forth here, and I think that they merit our support.
So I would want to disagree a little bit with Trustee Riser, and then also agree a little a little bit with Trustee Riser.
You've made three comments. Is there any other?
We're having a discussion, so I'm responding to the points that you made.
Will you recommend to the president to speak next?
So what I suggest that is important that she mentioned is that, yes, what matters is what happens in the classroom. And when we have high expectations set in the classroom, the children will rise to meet those expectations. And there is scientific studies out there that show by setting high expectations, that's how we get to better achievement, right? There's data out there that demonstrates this is the process. And CSBA even talks about the best way to do that is to set high expectations, and the organization then will rise to meet that challenge. So I, again, am on the kick that that is the piece that is the most important here.
President Water, may I respond just quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I think what our team will take away from this presentation and the discussion is that sense of urgency and purpose that we need to have in the Instructional Division around student academic achievement. And I think that that's been really clear this year, that that sense of urgency, regardless of what goal is set, that that is something that needs to be infused throughout the system around the urgency around student achievement. And I am looking forward to newly appointed Assistant Superintendent Ready leading that effort around that. And I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you in terms of classroom expectations, and how, as a teacher, I set very high expectations for my students. And many of them rose, and many of them didn't, but those expectations had to be clearly articulated for that to happen. And so I understand that point. I think in this way of the LCAP being a public document that we're using to measure our progress, that we want goals that we can then say we've met those goals at the end, and not that we've always fallen short. So there is that balance between those two, which I've mentioned. But I'm taking away, and my team is taking away, that sense of urgency and purpose that we need to have.
Thank you. I'd like to say that one of the things I noticed was how the great majority of our parents feel welcome at the school, feel that, you know, they're being communicated with appropriately. And I think that's huge, and this is certainly a change from some years ago. So there's real progress there. We're also moving on the chronic absenteeism. You know, that's enormous. And our, you know, our poor students who are experiencing homelessness have, I think, a relatively high graduation rate, all things considered. I mean, I was looking at that and thinking, and just imagining what it's like trying to, you know, pass your classes. I was just reading about a child in Sonoma County who's living in her car, and is graduating high school. So, you know, that's great. And we all do feel the sense of urgency, you know, we're, you know, rushing along. We sensed that when we were at Phillips School, Trustee Hart and I were at Phillips School, listening to the report, and how scores were going up, going up, going up. And then at the very last minute, just before the start testing, a group of students who don't speak English, newcomers, appeared, and they took the test. And that will affect test results. And that's the way it goes. Those are the breaks. But thank you very much. This is, I'm feeling that we are making progress. And I could tell you enjoyed this report because, you know, having the students involved is huge. So thank you.
And because it's her last one.
On to contract negotiations in Venetia. You can call me in three months, and you tell me what's better. Okay, is it okay if I close the public hearing? Yes, okay, great. And now we are going to...
Do we have public comment?
We already did that. I'm doing it early so I don't forget, okay? Okay, and we've got B, Introduction of Core World Language Instructional Material Adoption Recommendation for Middle School.
That's it. This is a presentation, right? I really thought I was going to have to say good morning. Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Water and Dr. Masetti. This is an introduction of core world language instructional materials for Unidos Middle School in particular. It's for a select group of students who are in Spanish for Spanish speakers. And so those students are coming with the social language, but need that academic language support. And so after engaging with the curriculum that's being used at the high school for Spanish for Spanish speakers, the teachers have been piloting curriculum that they feel is more appropriate for middle school. And so this recommendation is to support those students in that one strand at Unidos Middle School.
Let's see if we have any public comments on this. Mr. Michael?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Well, trustees?
No action.
No action. Okay, thank you. Nobody has a comment? Thank you so much. And Introduction of Core Online Curriculum and Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption Recommendations for High School. Mr. Michael, do we have any comments online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back.
So this is an introduction of instructional materials that aligns to a career technical education course that's currently in our schools but is being revised. And so it provides the support needed in two areas. One, the knowledge, but also demonstrating the skills. And so you have multiple courses here that are outlined. The first one is for the digital communications course at Vinage High School. And then you have, there are two levels to that. And so you see curriculum that supports that. And then you have the Human Anatomy and Medicine at Napa High School. And so as we transition courses from NCOE to NVUSD, you should, on an adoption cycle, look at these courses every three years. And so as a part of that process, these curriculum resources and supplementary resources need to be looked at and revised. And so in addition to this particular resources, we transition those courses, we'll continue to review these and see if these are the most up-to-date and aligned with the high-wage, high-skill, high-demand jobs that are in the industry, and look at these. So this is kind of a preliminary process with courses. But we'll put a process in place that looks a little bit different as we transition those.
Trustee Gracia.
So I'm concerned that we're being asked to adopt a curriculum, particularly for Human Anatomy, that doesn't have a physical textbook option. And I want to recognize that we have recently heard student voices that their concerns are they like a physical book, and they don't like digital-only options, and they have that real preference for a physical book. So as we contemplate future curricular adoptions, I would like one of the criteria that we evaluate to be whether or not there is a physical text available. I believe that should be one of the criteria we use to select future curriculum.
I'll make note of that. This particular curricular resource supports the next-generation science standards, but I agree, there is a need, as we transition these courses, to look at each of them and see what is the best resource, physical or online, but also these courses need hands-on, typically, availability for students to practice. And so we need to look at that curriculum. So I'll make note of that, make sure as we go through this process of transitioning that we take that into consideration.
Can I make a quick comment on this one? So I don't disagree with the physical books in some cases, but for example, in the Adobe certification section, the digital communications world moves so fast that if you were to get books in print, by the time you got them into the school, they're going to be out of date. So I think that we need to take that with a grain of salt, and understand that in, so this is my world. I hire people based on sometimes having these certifications in place. So I think it's great that we're offering that to our high school students. But again, not always, it's not as cut and dry as there has to be a physical book or else.
I appreciate that. And highlighting the differences, I think, is we need to look at each course, and we need to look at each industry and decide what's best. The Adobe curriculum is actually really necessary for them to demonstrate their skills and knowledge in that particular course.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Any other comments? Nope. Thank you. Dr. Ready. And now we're moving on to, whee, action items. Let's see. Number one, general services. A, nomination of the NVUSD Governance Team for the CSBA Golden Gavel Award.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments about this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee Finn McGrath?
Left.
Oh, he left. I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh, I don't need to ask him anymore. All right, so all in, we've got a motion, we've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No. Yea, it carries. Yea for us. Two, A, Business Services Proposition 28, Arts and Music in Schools Annual Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Are there any public comments on this, Mr. Michael?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. To B, PA System Change Order at Donaldson Way with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Three, A, Three Human Resources. A, Request to Hire Educator Less Than Fully Cr National.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes unanimously. Four, Instructional Services. A, Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Middle School.
I'd like to have some discussion on this item.
Okey-dokey. Fine. Let's go.
All right. So based on the lack of interest in this program historically, and the fact that only one teacher is actually interested in using this book, this is a waste of our time. It makes no sense to adopt, as a district-wide curriculum, a book that one teacher wants to read. There is no benefit to our students in adopting this as part of our curriculum. It hasn't been vetted by a curriculum council, and I'm not interested in adopting books into our curriculum forever just because NCOE said we should. You have to remember that curriculum adoptions are not just for this year. They're forever. As a system, we need to focus on initiatives that will impact our reading scores and move the needle on instruction. Randomly adopting books because some outside entity thinks it's a good idea is not the way to get this done. The book chosen here doesn't even integrate with our curriculum. If NCOE wants to do this type of program in the future, then they should start with our list of already-approved supplementary curricular books. We know that the governor and legislature have made it onerous to remove a book from the curriculum. So I'm feeling quite a bit more pressure when asked to approve a curricular resource as we can't easily undo an approval that may have been a mistake. I'm not about to allow NCOE to substitute their judgment for mine and willy-nilly approve books just because NCOE wants me to. In the future, if NCOE wants to participate in this program, they need to choose books that fit with our mission and goals, and that we can incorporate in a way that makes sense for our students, teachers, and strategic plan. I will not be dictated to by NCOE. If they want a partnership on future books for Napa Reads, then I welcome that. But it needs to be a true partnership, and actually involve input from us in a way that it has never done before. A partnership means working together and collaborating, not them making a decision and dictating to us a predetermined outcome. So I will not be supporting this item.
Okay, are there any other comments?
So I would have to agree that this process probably needs to be a little bit more collaborative with NVUSD going forward. My sons have participated in reading some of the books that has come up from Napa County Reads program, and they've enjoyed it. So I think there is some value in adopting some of the books that they have put forth to us. And I do know that some teachers actually get it for free through that program, not all, because I think there must be a deadline to get the books. They can't all, you know, get it to you if you decide, like, it's happening tomorrow and I want it today. I don't think that happens. But I do feel that there, I mean, there are teachers over there at NCOE who are helping to recommend some of this stuff, and they are interesting to our students. I have two at home. So I am not opposed to this, but I would really like to be more collaborative with them going forward if we decide that we are going to keep on doing this Napa County Reads program.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Jankowicz.
In this situation, I just, I don't want to politicize the book. It's a book. It's a good book. I understand that you want to assess process. I think that's different from the politicizing the process and then making that pertain to this particular book. So I think we need to separate those two issues. I will be approving the book, but I understand that you would like to discuss the process at some point.
Yeah, and I just want to remind the board that at the last board meeting, Dr. Ready did address that. So she'll be looking into that for next year.
Any other comments?
I'm going to move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, well, I actually read the book. And I actually read the book, and I do agree that, given that the superintendent's favorite word is collaboration, I would like to see more collaboration in the future. She has, we have had books from the NCOE that are very good. I'm thinking of the Francisco Imenez books that were wildly popular at Napa High School, and, you know, got a lot of reluctant readers going. This book is, will not send a fifth grader to the dictionary, but it is in diary form, lots of pictures. I read it in a few hours. And it does deal with mental health and, you know, body dysmorphia issues. And in the future, I would like more collaboration on this subject. But I will, you know, let's call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, and let's, four, B, New and Revised High School Course of Study Adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, great. Motion to approve. A second, do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Michael?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passes unanimously. For C, Core English Language Arts Instructional Material Adoption for High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion from Trustee Gracia, and a second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so it passes. 2023 to 2024 School Plan for Student Achievement, SPSA Addendum.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any comments online, public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. E, Memorandum of Understanding for School Resource Officers with the City of American Canyon.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any public commenters online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Passes unanimously. Five, operational services. A, request for agreement with JB Mechanical.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Six, school planning and construction. A, SPC 7.424, award of contract to Atlas Peak Construction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any, is anyone waiting to comment online?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. B, SPC 10.4-24, measure H, citizen bond oversight committee member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, any public comment online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And C, SPC 18.103-20, request to purchase furnishings for Alta Heights.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, are there any comments? Public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. It is unanimous, okay. Okay, informational, general services. A, curriculum and student support committee, David T. Gracia.
No meeting.
No meeting. Do I take public comment on that?
We don't. Not if there's no meeting.
No, no. I want to take public comment on everything after last week. Okay, B, facilities and technology committee, there's an attachment.
Public comment.
Public comment, yeah.
Okay. Is there a public comment on the attachment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Well, it was riveting. Okay, and that's great. And C, finance committee.
What's next time?
Yeah, we met yesterday, I think. That'll be next time. And policy committee.
Have not met.
Have not met. Okay. And two, business services, enrollment report. Are there any public comments on the enrollment report?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. And instructional services, expanded learning opportunities program plan, guide update. Do we have any public comments on that?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So M, additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent. Any comments?
Yes, so I just wanted to recognize, and I completely forgot, it was Jessica Chang, who was the baker that gave us the macarons. I wanted to make sure we publicly acknowledge her. And they were very delicious.
They were incredibly delicious. Okay, I just have one comment. You know, at the last meeting, our last meeting, I skipped over public comment, and I got a letter from someone objecting to it, and I apologized to him, and he accepted the apology. And I offered to have him comment tonight, and he was fine with it, so it's great. So I have to be very careful about that. You need to elbow me. And any other comments? Okay, future agenda items. Well, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed, yay.